All right, welcome, everybody. We will call tonight's meeting, August 18, 2020, to order. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boom Garden.
Here.
And Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Escondola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, if we all may please stand up for some words of inspiration from Councilmember Shaw, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Brad McIntyre, if you don't mind, sir.
All right. I think it's appropriate that we recognize tonight all of the situations going across our state. As the chief has binged to us, we have multiple fires across the state. So before I pray, let's just take a moment, say a silent prayer for all those that are faced with that this evening. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Father, we just ask right now that you would bring safety upon the residents of not only our community, but our great state here of California. Many friends just northeast and west are all faced with fires. We just ask for your guiding and protecting hand to be upon those, and your hand of safety to be upon the skills and the lives of the firefighters, which you have some of our own that are dispatched to those at this current time. Just be with them and get those under control. Father, we just pray that you'll bless our great city and that you'll give us the wisdom and the clarity to make the best decisions possible for our great city and its residents in Jesus' name. Amen. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead and see, read the virtual information right now. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued an executive order N3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority of the City of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health-safety precautions. To participate in this virtual meeting, we are utilizing GoToWebinar, the application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the Questions functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the Questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel that is on the right side of your screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the Questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the Questions portion of the app, and be sure to state the item on which you are commenting. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted upon, no more comments will be accepted for that item. We've already done roll call. Mr. City Attorney, may we have a report on closed-session items? And you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, thank you. And we have any modifications requested for the agenda? Doesn't appear to be? Okay. We will go on to a ceremonial presentation, which is item number one, Women's History Month proclamation, and apparently there's a video. Be nice to see. All right. Well, thank you all for coming out today to celebration of Women's History Month, the proclamation for March 2020. The reason, of course, we're doing it today is because of the restrictions due to the coronavirus and all those restrictions and what we have to deal with here. So thank you for being flexible and adaptable, and also thank you very much for being here today. Thank you all for being here today, as for every council member we have today. Folks, please welcome Marcia Kraus from Casa de Esperanza. She might be the only one that didn't quite make it today, so we are recognizing her nevertheless. Mary Tiara. Tiara, welcome. Debbie Picoyo.
Picoyo.
Picoyo, very sorry about that. Picoyo. Jaswinder Sandu. There she is. Liliam Dinsa Cantolugo. Welcome. Joyce Hammond. There you are. Hi, Joyce. Ball Dillon was unable to make it today. And Sarah Sealandrick. Little Sarah, a staple at Uba College for well over three decades. So each of you have received a copy of the proclamation and a yellow rose. The significance of the yellow rose is whether in August of 1920, supporters for women's voting rights or suffrage wore yellow roses to show their support. So it's very poignant, very significant of that, and we're happy to have all of you folks have one of those today. I'm going to read the proclamation, all of which you all have a copy of that. Whereas women have influenced and advanced every facet of American life and culture, the strength, ingenuity, and spirit of our female leaders, innovators, and pioneers shape our government, industry, families, and communities; and whereas this year marks the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to our Constitution, securing the right to vote for women. This milestone in our country was made possible in August 1920 by the devotion, leadership, and perseverance of pioneers like Elizabeth Cady Stanton and Susan B. Anthony; and whereas the ratification of the 19th Amendment enabled women to finally have their voices counted in voting booths, paving the way for greater female participation in all levels of government; and whereas throughout our history, women have also been pioneers themselves in fields like science, medicine, and engineering. And that list goes on and on. Bessie Coleman, the world's first civilian licensed African-American pilot, and Marie Luring, the first female truck designer, changed the way we think about aviation and transportation. St. Catherine Drexel selfishly served those in need and left an indelible mark on nursing and education. NASA mathematician Katherine Johnson was behind some of the brilliant work that made possible the first manned space flights by United States astronauts. Big deal. And most recently, two brave American astronauts, flight engineers Krista Cox and Jessica Mayer, made history by conducting the first all-female spacewalk outside of the International Space Station. And whereas in 2019, women comprised 71% of the net increase in employment, and female unemployment rate reached near historic lows, and women for the first time made up the majority of the college-educated workforce.
Thank you.
That's right. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as Women's History Month to pay tribute to the women who strengthen and enrich our society through civic action, devotion to family, and tireless dedication to the community, innovation, peace, and prosperity. And then, of course, it's dated July 2020. But we all understand why is that. So thank you very much. All right.
I'm here to do a plug for an event that the Arts Council is sponsoring. It's, how do you pronounce it, Pam? Wool-mannequin? There's a project, people have decorated mannequins, wool-mannequins, and they will be marched through Yuba City on August 22nd, the actual anniversary of, the 100th anniversary of the right to vote. And Pam Novak has made a couple beautiful ones. Lila Solerzano did a fabulous one. I've seen those three. I urge you all to come out and march through the streets, wearing a mask, being socially distanced, but celebrating our right to vote.
All right. Wool-mannequin, I like that. Anybody else care? Don't we give you an opportunity? Grace? Go right ahead.
I am extremely honored to have you all with us. I know that we wanted to celebrate you in March. We hope that we can bring other women to celebrate them in March as well. But every day is truly a celebration for women and women's rights, the voting opportunity will pay, all those other options as women that we have worked so tirelessly to bring forward in our community. And I thank you from the bottom of our heart for all that you have done and given to this community, because the wealth of your time, your energy, and your gifts have made the quality of this community even better than it was before. So thank you so much.
I would like to thank the city council for doing this for us and taking time out of your schedules during this very difficult period to come here and do this for us. So I'm very grateful, and I look forward to our community doing things like this more and more in the future. Thank you.
All right, very well said, all of you. And thank you all so much for being here. Thank you all for being here. And, you know, just right here in front of us represents so many years and years of hard work and dedication and contribution to our community. And like Grace said, you know, you make a big difference, and we are better because of you. So thank you very much. Have a good night. Well, thank you for that. Definitely a very important recognition to be had. Moving on to number two, COVID-19 discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is our normal update related to COVID-19. So here's the latest county monitoring data as of yesterday, August 17th. And so what you can see is based upon the criteria of elevated disease transmission, where the threshold is a case rate of greater than 100. Sutter County is currently at 227 people per 100,000. That's over a 14-day average. In terms of the testing positivity over seven-day average, we're at 8.8. And so based upon that criteria, we will continue to be on the county monitoring data. And then also here are the numbers for Yuba County as well. As of August 17th, there are currently 1,157 cases in Sutter County, seven deceased. And then currently, right now, there are 17 Sutter County residents hospitalized. If you look at the source of the infection, again, you can see that a big majority is related to contact with known cases, with the big majority of that related to friends, family, or roommates. And I think an interesting point that Dr. Lou made at our weekly conference last Wednesday is that, you know, when we think of social gatherings, we're thinking of these large gatherings. But in fact, it could be just a matter of you have someone from outside of your household coming over for dinner. And so, you know, it's, as we see on the news, these big parties that are taking place, that's not necessarily what's contributing towards these numbers. It can really be just as simple as having someone come over for dinner. In looking at the cases by location of residence, you can see that Yuba City within Sutter County has the vast majority, which is to be expected since we're the most populated area within Sutter County. And then I added this slide today just to show that the average age of the case in Sutter County is 37.2. A lot of people think that this is an older person's issue. But if you look at the age range, you know, we have 0 to 17, probably about looks about maybe 170 or so cases, 18 to 24, 25 to 34, 35 to 44, 45 to 54, and then you can see that it starts to taper off. So one thing that's come up in early August, you know, there's a lot of questions about when can schools, when can children return to schools? And so the state issued a waiver process for the in-person learning, just for elementary education. So this is just TK through sixth. But basically, CDPH recommends that schools within jurisdictions with 14-day case rates greater than 200 cases per 100,000 population should not be considered for a waiver to reopen. So if you go back to that case rate for Sutter County, we would not even be able to apply for a waiver. Closed elementary schools and counties on the monitoring list within the prior 14 days may not open for in-person instruction until they have received approval of a waiver submitted to the local health officer. Again, this only applies to elementary schools, so TK through six. So even if a school is a K through eight, those other grades, seventh and eighth, would not be able to, would not be part of this waiver process. And then prior to applying for the waiver, the applicant must consult with labor, parent and community organizations, and publish elementary school reopening plans on the website of the local educational agency. So I know that there's a significant impact to our community in terms of parents needing to stay home with their kids for virtual learning and assist their kids. But until the case count comes down to below that 200 cases per 100,000, just to be eligible for the waiver, that doesn't get us off the monitoring list, but this is just for the waiver. It's important for the public to understand that there is a process, but we aren't close to being eligible. City operations continue to be the same as they have in the last few weeks. City halls open Monday through Friday, animal services Tuesday through Saturday. The police department lobby continues to be closed to the public, and then all other facilities continue to remain closed to the public. Other than Gauchea Aquatic Park is open for limited periods of time for specific activities such as swim lessons and lap swimming. And with that, I will segue over to Community Services Director Brad McIntyre to give an update related to parks and recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As it relates to our Parks Department, as it states up there, and has been since the beginning of summer, Regency Park and Shanghai Garden Park have splash pads. They are clearly being used a lot right now with the heat we have. Seven days a week, they start at 11:00 a.m., and then they shut down right around 7:00 p.m. Unfortunately, our playgrounds continue to be closed due to the health order. And as it relates to our recreation programs, we are currently, or we have currently provided over 300 swim lessons in the last six weeks to our community. We are still taking registration for participants starting next week, and it's a two-week session that would begin next week, and those times would be 4:30, 5:15, 6:00, 6:45, and 7:30. We don't have a lot of participants right now in the morning or in the afternoon, obviously because of school taking place and with distant learning. So we have adjusted our schedule to the evening, and with limited staff, we're still have the ability to offer swim lessons. If anybody is listening and they are interested in signing up, they can call 822-4655, and our aquatic staff will be able to take your information and register, help you register. I'd gladly take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on the COVID situation?
None received.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three. The appearance of interested citizens due to the coronavirus, comments are to be provided by email to cityclerk@yubacity.net. Oral comments by phone or in person are currently not available. I see we have one email. Do we have anything else besides the email as of yet?
For public comment? No.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, this is from Mark Kendallberger. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and elected council and staff. My name is Mark Kendallberger, a citizen of Stockton and tonight representing Schneider Electric. As a league platinum partner, we realize economic survival has become the priority for city leaders. Despite the whiplash of urgent and unpredictated challenges, leaders realize that rebuilding a resilient economy base must be considered in parallel to solving current health, safety, and revenue threats. Today, you can improve essential infrastructure and generate new revenues from city systems in a sustainable way with little or no new capital. For instance, the delivery of smart city services starts with the solid backbone of streetlight infrastructure. Generate new, generate net new revenue, ongoing revenue for decades, and provide high-speed Wi-Fi, 6 broadband to every citizen, business, and school in the city limits. The economic, education, and social impact can change your city's trajectory for generations, and there's much, much more. A team led by Schneider Electric is asking to engage with city elected and staff in open and frank discussion of possibilities. Should we agree to move forward, we will lead no-cost feasibility study, providing a business case to justify a procurement process. We would expect to complete this feasibility in less than 90 days. We are capable of building the solution that best fits your needs and generate new revenues as early as 12 to 18 months. Reach out to me, Mark Kendallberger.
Okay, thank you very much. And having no other further public comment, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar items?
None received.
Nothing. All right. Any suggestions or emotion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Like to approve the consent calendar items four through 15.
Through the mayor? Yes, sir. Like to remove item eight for discussion, please. Okay.
So items four through 15, less item number eight.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, items four through 15, minus number eight, which will be removed for separate discussions. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed, passes. And move on to number eight, sir.
Through the mayor, thank you. Through the process of working with the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, currently, the City of Yuba City is paying approximately $52,000 for economic development aid, if you will, approximately $25,000 through the local EDC, and another $27,000 through the Greater Sacramento Economic Council membership. While I'm not specifically in opposition to signing an agreement with GSEC, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, I'm concerned that the two organizations are not operating in sync. It certainly has come to my attention that both agencies seem to have a communication problem. I have not validated that myself, but it's certainly come to me from several different avenues. I also believe that there are issues in regards to the two presentations. One was the presentation by Mr. Broome, and the other was the SEDS document that was presented to us, and that there may be some concern on both parties about the validity of the information contained in both. As we move forward and move away from, you know, hopefully the efforts that we've put forth through the budget, which we should wrap up in September, I think it's prudent for this council to take a deeper dive into the expenditure of this $52,000, just to make sure that our expectations for what we're getting, i.e. our return on our investment, is validated by the amount of money that we're spending. We are in tough economic times, and I have a deep concern that we are getting what we should be able to be getting from the Economic Council and the EDC. And I know that the mayor is on the board for the GSEC, and I know Councilwoman Escondola is on for the EDC. And perhaps that's, you know, the two of you can get together and discuss whatever is or isn't happening between the two organizations. But as a council, I think it's an item that bears more scrutiny. Like I said, I'm not here to spend the citizens' money without knowing what I'm getting for it, and right now, I'm not sure what we're getting for that. That's just my opinion.
Thank you for that.
Through the mayor, thanks. Vice Mayor Boom Garden, I think your concerns and areas are valid. They're fair statements. I do like to share that we have had a meeting. The mayor asked to schedule a meeting, and I was included in that meeting, you know, because of the Brown Act, we have rules that we follow. So we were in that meeting with Brenda and our city manager, and precisely to the points of what you just mentioned were the discussion items that we had, at least with EDC. I was involved with the mayor. And I think, I won't speak for you, Mayor, but we made some strides in that meeting. We are hoping to plan a workshop where there could be further learning and education on the council's part, because there were certain things within that meeting that we also learned in that discussion. So the return on investment is a very important piece of it, and I think with economic development, there's always this kind of, how do you measure it? You know, how do you know that it's impacting, and how do we know as a city we're getting the best of it? So there's areas that, as a city, we still need to further grow within our internal systems as well. But I think that we're already on that direction with the mayor, and I had that discussion with EDC. And I know that the mayor is very much in tune and communication with GSEC. So we could, if you're interested in that workshop, that's the next thing that we're heading. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that discussion?
No, essentially, just what you were saying. We have the same exact concerns you did, that the ROI is a big deal. We received some good answers. I have a difficult time wrapping my head around it, too. I want to be able to drive down the street and point to a business that was here because of that $52,000 investment. And a lot of it is the communication back and forth. Also, we did get what we paid for from our local EDC, which is to be involved with the SEDS document. However, we do have the option to do à la carte services, if you will. And I think that may have been, has been underutilized so far. We have a potential to grow and expand versus what that would add up to versus hiring a completely different position with benefits for our economic development efforts. GSEC is important for us to be a part of their regional conversation, because some folks who might work in a place located not in Yuba City, a lot of them, or some of them at least, live here, which the city reaps benefits from that as well. So the regional conversation, we get, some of the flow comes into the city that way, but as Grace said, it's very difficult to measure. We have a renewed enthusiasm for continuing deeper conversations, which is the impetus for the workshop that we had mentioned, to leverage our membership to the full extent possible to see some results. And yet, while we do have efforts with business retention and expansion, that role primarily falls in local, and then regionally, being part of the regional conversation, regional efforts was where GSEC falls in. So I am looking forward to folks from our local EDC coming and speaking with staff in City Hall to inform them what the options are, what services they provide, and what can we do to further enhance our efforts. I'm comfortable with going one more lap around the calendar, at least, to put forth those renewed efforts that we've discussed already, to see what we can do. But it is, even it is, I don't want to say only $52,000, but in the bigger picture, when we talk millions in some projects, it's a rather economical investment, but we do need to still make sure, and we have the responsibility, making sure we're getting a return on that investment. So hopefully that helps.
Did you have anything?
No. Through the mayor. You know, listening to the recent two presentations from both, you know, GSEC and the EDC, all of you guys, starting with the vice mayor, is on point. But if we're going to move this forward, we have to clearly define what the expectations are. And the return on investment, as much as GSEC provides it, as much as Ms. Rannick from EDC provides it, they're running big numbers through a calculation that really, it's a wag for better guess, because it is what it is. One of the things, like you mentioned with GSEC, and I'm not against GSEC, I'm not against the EDC, there just needs to be clear expectations. But like GSEC was talking about the money brought back to this economy, the same problem that affects that report- the same problem that affects that report from GSEC is the same problem that we find in some of our budgetary items, that why we've had, you know, budget concerns over the years is all built upon economic growth, housing growth, business growth. And prior to us becoming on this council, we went through at least a four to six-year period of no growth, literally. We know the housing starts had come to a dismal stop. We know that businesses for a lot of, there hadn't been a lot of those built. And so you have one part of that economic equation that wasn't working, but yet they want to show the ROI based upon it was working when you get to the underlying things. Personally, I invite the EDC to come in. I'd like GSEC to be here. And we need to kind of have that open and frank dialogue about what the expectations are. Because if the GSEC is bringing business opportunities to the region, I would like for them to be bringing stuff to us for our region, not just Sacramento. And that's going to take engagement by our EDC. And just speaking frankly, I'm not against the EDC, but we've seen communication issues when we've had economic workshops with outside consultants coming in. We all witnessed that over at the Senior Citizens Center. I think it was last summer when we were over there. And we've got to work together for the greater good of this community. So I'm with the vice mayor. I have concerns about both of them. I'm not open, I'm not against not continuing. But if we're going to continue, we have to clearly define those lines and what we expect from the organizations to get these guys working together. Because that is clearly the disconnect. And GSEC will say it's EDC and EDC will say it's GSEC. End of the day, you've got two people that aren't talking and we're suffering. And so we've got to get over that. And I think the workshop is great. But during the workshop, I really don't want to hear, well, I can do this, I can do that. It needs to be an open two-way street so they understand we expect this and we expect that. Because for too long now, we've just basically been directed. So I like the continued membership, but we have to have clear expectations because the math is truly flawed.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'm hearing a common concern across from the four of us that have talked about it so far. The common concerns is lack of communication, perhaps, clarity of the expectations and frankly, is the city getting its money's worth? Pretty much three areas. And in those three areas, at least when the mayor and I sat down with Brenda and with our city manager, Diana Langley, we covered those three areas pretty, in a pretty clear, frank discussion. My view about how that role, the conversation came out and watching Brenda explain, I sense in hearing her out on that and a few other meetings since thereafter, her commitment to the city, to this region is very strong. It's a strong commitment. I believe there's an opportunity for us to learn, educate ourselves a little bit more, as both of you are saying, and gain that understanding of how these relationships interface. When do they interface and when don't they? And how do we get the best results for this city for us? One area that I am concerned is, in addition to those three, is that as a city, we don't have the internal operations to really have that central management to help within those two particular contracts that we have right now with EDC and GSEC. We have Ben, who's taken over, you know, development services and we used to have some sort of small economic aspect of our work, but those things are just not in place and that's some fiscal things that we're figuring out. But I think in that workshop, we could have that even further conversation openly amongst the five of us with representatives virtually or in person, depending on when we get to that date. But all those very specific things that you just pointed out were the areas that we talked directly. And it wasn't an easy conversation and it wasn't defensive. It wasn't offensive. It was truly, we want to do best from both sides. EDC wants to do well for Uba City and Uba City wants to do well for the entire constituency that we serve. Now with GSEC, I haven't had those conversations. I haven't had that with Barry. I participated in a virtual meeting that we had with the mayor and the same presentation that Barry had with one of his representatives is pretty much the same conversation in that one meeting along with our city manager. So I just want to assure my colleagues here that we have had those very clear, direct conversations, okay? So the money is important, but the quality of that work and the expectations is even more important because we want to get the best out of it.
Two points that I would like to add to echo Councilwoman Espandola's point. What we've heard from both the Uba Center EDC as well as GSEC is that city staff has not been engaged with either organization in terms of economic development. And so if we are to go forward with memberships for both, we need to do a renewed effort to have city staff engaged in that process. And so my second point is, is that I think it's part of a bigger question in terms of economic development. We have an economic development commission within the city that we currently don't have a clear direction for. And so as council moves forward, I think to answer that question of where does the city want to go with economic development? What do we want to do with our economic development commission? What's our role with the Uba Center EDC and GSEC? Those warrant a lot of discussion. And so I appreciate the vice mayor's comments about the need to go back and kind of reassess and reevaluate. That's true. But, you know, the bigger picture of how do these all play together? What is our role? How do we support it? And then also, at the council level, we have the representatives to the boards, but really, the day-to-day really comes down to staff being available to field questions and to be able to provide the support to all of those, the commissions and GSEC.
Well said, thank you very much. All right, any commentary, sir? Nothing?
Through the mayor, I just want to support exactly what city manager Diana Langley said. It really comes down to our own internal need for operations and staffing as well. And not to add anything else to Ben's plate because he's pretty full, but I don't know how we're going to do that, but we're all going to need to come up with somehow to help with this area. Thank you.
Final comment from me is a long journey with the city in regards to economic development as a department head, where we had the EDC, we didn't have the EDC, we had our own economic development person. I have not seen really any of those result in any real concrete, solid returns on investment. I think that they're all helpful. I'm certainly not trying to throw shade on any of those, but I do appreciate the interim city manager's comments about trying to get at this whole thing and take a look at it and make sure that whatever it is we're doing, whatever money we're spending, we're doing so efficiently and effectively. Because the topic of economic development, to me, includes business retention as much as business attraction. And I do believe that, especially in these COVID times, this is something that should rise. And I do believe it's in one of our priorities, being business friendly. But I do think it's something that, again, as we move slowly away from and hopefully towards looking at where we're going to be in September with the budget workshop, that we need to refocus on economic development. It's going to be incredibly important to the city in the years to come.
I would add a base of that would be some infrastructure expansion. Figure out a way to do that. That's going to, that'll allow us to be more attractive for these business locates. Even if you gave you a blank check or something in a really nice industrial park eventually somewhere, somehow, would be nice. But right now, we have on the table an action item to continue our membership in the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. If anybody would care to make a motion on that, one way or the other.
I move to continue the membership.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to continue our membership with GSEC. That's a year-long membership, Diana?
Yes.
One year, for one year? On the, you know, presumption that we are going to continue this conversation similar to what Councilwoman Espandola explained.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
How soon, Ms. Langley, do you think we can have a workshop together with these two agencies? Because before I vote, I would hate to vote yes for something and we not be able to get these two agencies together till February or March, virtually or not. And I know I'm asking you to speak for them, but I apologize. I mean, is it something that we can try to happen in the next month?
So our discussion with Brenda Strannix was to first start with her having meetings with staff internally so that staff understands what the EDC has to provide in terms of resources. And then a follow-up discussion with that related to the workshop was to actually schedule it once the new city manager's on board. And so we're bringing the new city manager into the conversations related to it. And so based upon where we are at the very early stages of the recruitment, most likely, if council were to go that direction, it would be early next year for the workshop. And that seemed to align okay with Brenda's schedule just because of all the COVID-related items that the EDC is dealing with right now. Not to say that they might not still be dealing with that then, hopefully not. But that would give time to prepare. In terms of GSEC, we have not talked to them about a workshop. As Councilwoman Espandola and Mayor Harris indicated, they did have a phone call with those two council members, but we could talk to them about having a workshop sooner.
Just as one of the five, I would like to see that workshop not be belated to early next year because we basically just wasted half a year again of a membership. I think it would behoove us if we start with these organizations, meeting with staff and then likewise, meeting with the council so that when the new city manager gets here, it's not, we're expecting the city manager to understand and come back our way. We are already hitting the ground running. And I personally, if we're going to wait six, seven months, it's a no-starter for me. I would like to have meetings with us, with these agencies, sooner than better. We don't have to wait on the new city manager to get an understanding ourselves and set some expectations since we set the policies. So just one of five, that would be my input. So I ask the question of the council. And Mr. Attorney, tell me if I'm out of order here. But my vote is going to be based upon how soon we can set up these meetings. And because if they're going to be six, seven months down the line, to me, it's a waste of one year's funds. If we can do it in the next couple of months, I'm all for it because we're not wasting six or seven months. Is there any way to get an answer to that, Mr. Attorney?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Still muted.
Yeah, you're still muted.
Hold on, we got our computer guru here. While we're waiting for Shannon, can I make a comment? How about we just table this till the next meeting? That way Diana can maybe give us some information when we can have a meeting with the Greater Sacramento group. Yeah.
I'm not muted in a mic.
Oh, there you go.
There you go, you're back.
You're back.
Welcome back.
So you can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, great. I don't even know what happened. Thank you, Councilmember Shaw, for your question. I don't know that you can approve something tonight and contingentally approve upon something happening within 60 days unless it's not necessary for us to prove, give your final approval for the $50,000. So for example, you would say, hey, this is approved, contingent upon them doing X, Y, and Z within the next 60 days. But if it doesn't occur, no payment should be made until that occurs in 60 days. You could do it that way.
Per Councilman Cardoza's suggestion, is it, are we under a time constraint to renew with GSEC?
I'm sure they would be understanding the council's request. They've been understanding in terms of, you know, deferring it to this point in time because we requested that Barry do a presentation related to the return on investment, which he did at the last meeting. And so then council requested to bring forward the membership for consideration. And so I would follow up with Mr. Broome in terms of the request for a council workshop within the next 60 days.
I would agree with Councilman Cardoza. If there's a possibility of giving you a little time to work with Mr. Broome, figure out if you could accommodate Councilman Shaw's request. I'm okay with that, as long as we're not placing the agreement in harm's way.
I think it is important to get a plan in place assuming the better COVID's really putting a damper on things as far as perhaps moving forward with some of the things in that plan. When you do speak with Mr. Broome, Diana, I'm interested in knowing some bullet points, directly ordered bullet points of a plan that he would recommend, what they can do. We already have the numbers. We already have all of that. We have the report. I would like to know, directing to the point, this is, if he is willing to do it, a plan in place. If he was us, how would he use him?
Right, and one of the things that, at his presentation, one of the slides he didn't get to was there was a slide in terms of what they need from the city.
Okay.
And so part of that was they need a staff member to participate in the meetings. They need a staff contact to be able to reach out to, to discuss projects. And so if we schedule a workshop, I need to understand what council's goal is with that workshop and then also expect Mr. Broome to provide expectations of the city in terms of how we're going to participate. And, you know, recognizing the resources that we have, I just want to make sure that council's aware that there will be asks of the city.
So through the mayor, if I may, given that and if fiscally, we're not able to provide that, is he basically saying he's not interested in working with us?
He'll continue to work with us to, I would say, we would get out of it what we've been getting.
Okay.
So in terms of what we've been getting the last few months, I would expect we would continue to get the same level of service because of, it would be the same level of effort that the city's put into it. He did have some ideas that he brought up in terms of, you know, looking at with LDS Temple being here, could you coordinate with Uba College to get a satellite campus of Brigham Young? He did have some specific things that he discussed. In terms of projects that come forward within the Sacramento regional area, both the Uba Center EDC and GSEC get those requests for proposals. So as those proposals come across to the city, we would need to respond in terms of, do we have sites that can meet the criteria? And so that would require some staff time to be able to respond to that. So with that, any other questions?
Sure, yeah, just a quick one to follow up with that is, if Mr. Broome had a suggestion in the discussions you have with him regarding what that staff time would be, that might better, that might enable us to better understand what the commitment on the city would be. I don't know what that is, is it a halftime position? Is it a full-time position? Just to figure out whether we can absorb that or whether we're going to have to look outside of the organization to, once again, staff a position.
Okay.
Those are important questions for me to have addressed.
Yeah.
And through the mayor, along those same lines, asking what we expect out of them. And that's why I think it's important we get them both together, not at separate times, because we can figure out how all three, us, EDC and GSEC, all work together. EDC has its ass, GSEC has its ass. We all work together to figure out how it's going to be an interlocking and working wheel. Because at some point, like we alluded to earlier, we've got to fix the communication problems between those two agencies as well to really make this work, to be worthwhile to continuing the membership in those. So I think it's key that we have all of us at that workshop, not just one and then a second one another. We need to all be there.
Is the next meeting too soon for you, Diana?
I don't know, it would depend upon Brenda and then Barry. So.
I have a public comment from Danielle Casey, who is with GSEC. She's, she's been trying to get our attention. She said she would be happy to meet as soon as possible and she would love to comment if possible.
And I've got Barry texted me saying he would love to get on a call right now if we wanted to like him to. I think at this point, we know, we know what we're, what we're going to be asking and he's clearly is too. So, and there's one comment, I can't remember what I was going to add. Oh, the LDS potential satellite campus, just since we brought that up, I did follow up on that, made a couple of calls and used, talked with Steve Hammerstam of our, he was on our city's EDC, and he made a couple of calls. He expressed his opinion, made a couple of calls to verify that opinion with some other people, and they're, for right now, they're not interested because of everything, everything is going online and of course, thank COVID. So FYI on that, on that option anyway.
I, through the mayor, I do support the idea of scheduling the workshop. I mean, that's the idea that we came up with in our meeting. I'm just hearing you out, Councilman Shaw, where we're thinking 90 days, so this is August. I'm just kind of rolling out the dates. Oh, within, oh, 60 days. Okay, thank you. So you're thinking before October? Okay.
Hopefully sometime in September.
September? So probably more than, I don't know with EDC, because I know she's really busy with these other grants, but I mean, the presentation of maybe the end of September or the first one in October, the workshop, or something in, in between that time if we don't, you know, on a off day that we don't have a city council, we can schedule a workshop. I mean, I, I don't see that Brenda would not be supportive of that in the conversations that we've had with her. So I, I support what EDC is doing. They, I've checked with other partners in the community and they've been able to do quite a bit for them in infrastructure and other parts of the areas that are future planning items of what we do. So, I mean, I can, I can, how would I, because I started the motion, so would we just?
You can, we can withdraw it and then we can table it and get an update from Diana in two weeks.
In two weeks?
Or our first, our next meeting.
Then I can support that.
All right.
Are you pulling your motion then?
Yes, I am.
Mayor Harris?
Oh, yes.
Excuse me, there's one more comment from Danielle Casey with GSEC. She said, "We have not been asked at all regarding a workshop, so this is first we've heard of the request, but would of course be happy to participate in the next month."
Yes, that's very consistent with the way they do business. I think their, the, their last presentation is in their mind, but that's, that's fine. They are usually right on top of them. Barry could, Barry and Danielle both can do it without even preparing. They have a lot of information in their head.
And just to clarify, we haven't asked GSEC, so we're having the discussion, that's why they're not.
Not for this yet. We were going to start with the EDC and they blended that in today, so that's fine.
That's why they didn't know.
They're very accommodating. Okay, so the item has been tabled and thank you very much. Is there anything further from anybody? And I'll just ask before, is there any public comment on this item?
No more received.
Okay. And thank you Barry and Danielle for participating.
The mayor? Sorry, has the item been tabled or has it been continued to a time and date certain?
Well, she pulled the motion.
I pulled the motion.
And so we are continuing it until our next meeting to get an update from our interim city manager.
Okay, and I see enough nods, so it's by a claim?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that discussion. It's a good one. Now we're going to move on to item number 16, business items. Does anybody need a break or anything? We're good?
We're good.
All right. Harder Tanks Painting Improvement Project. I know we have some letters, some public comment on this item.
Yes, so if it's okay with council, I'm going to go through the presentation. I would ask council then to basically open to the public. At that point, I will read the letter received from the contractor, Calcierra. I would ask that council get additional public input. We then close the public hearing and then there's a series of questions that have been submitted by Calcierra. And so after the public hearings closed, my proposal would be to go through those questions and provide responses in real time. And so if council is okay with that, like I said, I'll do the presentation first and then get into the letter that was received from Calcierra.
Okay.
Okay, the project before you tonight is the Harder Tanks Painting Improvements Project. So the city's water distribution system is comprised of mains within the streets and then you also have reservoirs located throughout the city. The Harder Tank Facility includes two 2 million gallon tanks. And the staff had a consultant go out and do an inspection, not only the exterior coating of the tanks, but the interior coating as well. From the exterior perspective, as you drive by the tanks, they're located on the west side of Harder Parkway, you can clearly see that the coatings have degraded. There's a lot of rust along the soffit. But then on the interior, there's some pictures here that show that we have interior rust and delamination of the interior coating. And what they noted was that the surface appeared to be from a much older tank than what it is. And so based upon that, staff moved forward with hiring Jacobs Engineering to prepare the plans and specifications for the project to recote not only the interior, but the exterior of the tanks as well. So here's the, here's a nice picture of the tanks when they were first constructed. So right now, you would go out there and you would see a lot of rust along the top here. As noted, the tanks are located on the west side of Harder Parkway, north of basically where Jefferson would extend through. For reference purposes, here's Walmart. The project was put out to bid in May and 11 bids were received on July 14th. The engineer's estimate was 1.7 million. And you can see that there's a wide range of bids, a large portion below the engineer's estimate, and then we had an apparent low bidder of Calcierra Construction, whose bid amount was $1,258,860. And then the second low, FAR Construction, was $1,259,900. So this award bid is contested. So the apparent second low bidder, FAR Construction, submitted an objection to the city that the apparent low bidder, Calcierra, was not responsive due to an unregistered subcontractor and defective bid bond. So that letter is posted on the city's website and available for public review. Staff also reviewed the bids in coordination with the city attorney and found that the apparent low bid from Calcierra Construction is not responsive due to several reasons. So the subcontractor was, that was listed in the bid was not registered with the Department of Industrial Relations at the time the bid was submitted, which was required per the bid specifications. The bid bond was submitted on a form that was marked sample and a separate bid bond was also submitted that was not conforming with the proposal forms. And then on a line item for a bid item for metals, they noted no bid. So actually, they actually wrote no bid in the line item. So staff notified Calcierra Construction of the findings and recommendations to be presented to council. So we notified them on July 23rd. Calcierra Construction responded late last week on August 14th asserting that the subcontractor was registered with DIR at the time the notice to contractors was issued, but due to COVID restrictions, was unable to reach DIR staff to pay the necessary fees and was assured by DIR that a 30-day grace period would be in effect. So the staff response to that is there was nothing located that would legally mandate an extension or provide a grace period for renewal of registration due to COVID on either the DIR website or the executive orders issued by the governor. DIR has an online renewal and registration system that would allow registration to renew electronically. And no special exceptions to the registration requirement applies. This project is not federally funded. So here's an excerpt or a screenshot of the Department of Industrial Relations website. The subcontractor's name is listed here, but over on here, when you look at the registration history, you can see there was an expiration date of June 30th. And then they went back into effect of July 29th and we opened bids July 14th. Calcierra also asserts the sample marking on the bid bond it provided was first noticed when the bid response was being packaged and they decided to include both the signed sample bond, which was in the city's format, and another bond from the surety company, both of which they assert are legally valid. So staff's response to that is the bid packet required that the city's bond template be used. As the only bond based on the city's template was marked sampled, it is an irregularity indicating the bond is not valid or enforceable. So what should have taken place is it should have been a clean bid bond without the word sample across it. And so we've got that issue. And then in addition, they issued, they submitted a second bid bond that didn't conform to the requirements of the bid bond that we provide in the bid package. So based upon those two items, we determined that that was unacceptable. So staff is recommending that council reject the apparent low bid by Calcierra. The irregularities in the bid response constitute a substantial inconsequential discrepancy from the city's call for bids because it affects the amount of the bid, gives a bidder an unfair advantage and affects the ability to make bid comparisons. Even if these regularities were inconsequential, the council is not required to waive them. This will help ensure fairness for all bidders to the process as it promotes complete responses and sets a universal standard for all bidders. So one thing that I want to note, a question came up, responsive versus responsible. And I think that's a really good clarification. So a bid is responsive if it meets all of the requirements of the bidding documents and solicitation. The idea is to give all bidders an equal opportunity to gather information and prepare their bids. Making a decision on whether a bid is responsive or non-responsive relates to whether any irregularity in the bid gives the bidder substantial advantage or benefit not enjoyed by other bidders. Versus being responsible refers to a contractor's capability to provide the services requested. A bidder is responsible if they are capable or qualified to do the work. So to be clear in regard to Calcierra's bid, the only item under consideration tonight is the responsiveness of their bid, not are they a responsible contractor? That's not in question whatsoever. And so although staff is unable to recommend award of the bid to Calcierra due to the facts of the case, staff would both encourage and welcome Calcierra's participation in future bid opportunities. So staff has also reviewed the bid response provided by FAR Construction of Sparks, Nevada. The bid was responsive to the requirements of the city's bid requirements, so no regularities were noted, and FAR Construction is a responsible company capable of completing the work. So based upon that, staff recommends that council award a construction contract to FAR Construction an amount of their total bid of $1,259,900. So the estimated total construction cost for the project is approximately, it's approximately $1,661,890, which consists of the components noted there. And there are sufficient funds in the project account. We actually have a balance of approximately $2.3 million in the account right now. Staff is also requesting a construction contingency of $125,990 and a consultant contingency of $60,000 to cover unpredictable variables associated with the project. So once they get in there, there could be possible metal repairs that need to be done to tank elements. And then those metal repairs cannot be quantified until they get in there to actually start doing the work. Staff is also requesting authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering to assist with engineering services during construction. There'll be a lot of submittals associated with this that staff doesn't have the technical expertise to review, and so Jacobs would provide that. And then also, this would require a special inspection. So we're requesting to award a contract to West Coast Coatings for the special coatings inspections and testing. We don't want to get into a situation again where the work doesn't meet the expectation in long term, we get into where the coating doesn't last as long as, as it should. So with that, the recommendations are noted here. So adopt a resolution approving the plans and specs, adopt a resolution approving finding of a Class 1 categorical exemption, reject the apparent low bid as unresponsive, award a construction contract to FAR Construction, adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager into it, to enter into professional services agreements with Jacobs Engineering and West Coast Coatings. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions at this time or we can go into the, the public hearing portion.
Any questions from council? Nothing?
I do.
Go ahead.
The mayor, how old are the current tanks?
They were constructed in the timeframe of, I believe, about 2005, completed around 2005.
So is the interior damage, I can understand the exterior issues, but is the interior damage, would that be considered normal?
No. You would expect some pinholes to occur over time where you go in and do spot repairs. In terms of the delamination, the rust, what the consultant noted was that seemed to be more advanced than what would you, you would expect of a tank of that age. They would expect it to last longer. Also, as part of this work would be also addressing the cathodic protection system within the tanks.
So this, if, if this is awarded to this particular company, what kind of warranty, I guess, for lack of a better term, what's the expected, you know, they're going to have to go in and do all the things you got to do to get it back to bare metal, I'm assuming?
Right.
So how do we protect ourselves from something like this happening?
Well, that's why we hire the special inspector where this is what they do. This is their, you know, their expertise. And so we hire a special inspector to come in to ensure that the, the coating installation meets the specifications. They're also required to provide a warranty of one year. And then if we got into a situation where years down the road, there was an issue, then that would get into the construction defect where we would get the city attorney involved and their attorneys involved and we would address it through that avenue.
So there is a potential for recourse if there's a problem?
There is, yeah.
And Diana, what about recourse from the previous provider?
No, it's too, too long ago.
Too long ago?
Yeah.
All right. Good question, though.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
And what is the true life of a good job that's well done without any defects? I mean, another 10 years, 20 years before we're having to do this again?
I believe it's about 20 years.
Okay.
That's, I'm going based on memory of what I read in the report.
All right, so I know we have letters to read or a letter to read. Do we have any, any public comment that came in online on this by chance?
None have come online.
Okay. At this point, we can read the letter.
Okay, I'm going to take a drink of water first and be reading a little bit. Okay.
Do we open the public hearing before the letters or during or after?
I don't see where we need a public hearing on this.
I would go ahead and open it to public comment at this point in time and I'll read the letter and then we would close public com. So even though it's not technically a public hearing, I would still open it for public comment and then close public comment and.
All right. Well, I just asked for public comment?
I'm talking about the letter from Calcierra.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. We'll open it.
Okay. So the city has received additional correspondence this afternoon from Marco Lustich of Calcierra Construction. And so it says, "Honorable council members, Calcierra Construction Incorporated is respectfully hereby submitting this synopsized review of our case objecting to the city's categorization of our bid as non-responsive. First, Calcierra Construction is a highly respected A license general engineering contractor with a 40-plus year record of impeccable contracting services, including numerous previous projects with equal or greater scope and size. Second, in regards to the city claim that Calcierra used an unregistered contractor, the California Labor Code, Public Contract Code, and the Department of Industrial Relations' Public Works reforms specifically invalidates the city's claim. The specific excerpts pertaining to this invalidation has been provided to the city in the previously submitted Calcierra letter dated August 11th, 2020. Third, in regards to the city's claim that Calcierra submitted an insufficient bid bond, a properly valued bid bond was acquired and submitted on both the city's form and as an independent document with full notary stamps and wet signatures prior to the bid due date. Based on the fact that the bid bond was valid and a simple call to the bonding company would have confirmed the validity of the bond, Calcierra's bond must be considered to be valid. The reference to the city's sample designation on their form is a fault of the city's bid package structure and is immaterial to the bond's validity. Finally, the city references a discrepancy in the no-bid designation in the Calcierra bid item number four. In fact, the city distributed addendum number one to the bid that specifically changed bid item number four from a bid item to an approved steel repair item. The city's explicit exclusion to this change was applicable to contractors that would opt to perform approved steel repairs for contractors' temporary access points. Calcierra will not be performing any steel modifications for temporary access, thereby invalidating the." invalidating the need to price bid item number four. The Calciera bid substantially conforms to the bid request as advertised by the city. Calciera is not requesting a bid alteration of any type. Legal precedent, as referenced in Calciera's August 11 letter, supports Calciera's claim that the city referenced discrepancies are minor and inconsequential to the material nature of the bid. On this basis, we hereby respectfully request that the board allow the legitimately lowest-priced competent bidder as Calciera Construction to perform the subject project on your behalf. Thank you for your review and consideration of this very important matter." And there were a series of questions that were submitted along with the letter, and so once we close the public comment period, I will read those questions and then provide the response.
Okay. Do we have any further public comment? Okay, we'll close that public comment period, and we'll go ahead and get into that.
Question number one, did the council members review Calciera's response letter? So staff response, the letter was posted on the city's website and provided to the city council. Question number two, did Yuba City's council, in terms of our attorney, respond to the points put forward in our letter? Staff response, legal advice from the city attorney is confidential. However, staff have worked closely with the city attorney's office during this process. Number three, if so, what was the publicly available response? Staff's response, there is no publicly available response, but after appropriate consultation, staff's recommendation to reject Calciera's bid as non-responsive has not changed. Number four, was any outreach to our surety conducted to confirm the validity of the two bidders' guarantees provided with the bid? Staff response, this is not required. The bottom line is that the bid bonds were non-conforming and not in compliance with the bid packet requirements. The city may demand strict compliance with the bid specifications. Number five, was any outreach conducted to confirm the validity of the DIR registration criteria as it relates to this issue? Staff response, DIR registration, or lack thereof, by the subcontractor was confirmed on multiple locations, occasions. A slide was provided that showed an excerpt from DIR's website confirming that the subcontractor was not registered at the time of the bid opening. Number six, bid item number four was optional. If we had listed $0 for the item, the city could conceivably, if we had listed $0 for the item, the city could conceivably conclude that Calciera owed the city a door sheet, and that it should be provided for $0 cost. The industry correct response for the item is no bid, as the scope of work not required. This was offered specifically to negate any ambiguities. In what way did this item affect the total that was written both numerically and spelled out in English? So response, in the interest of time, this is a smaller issue and it doesn't address the failure to comply with the bond and registration requirements, each of which provides an unfair advantage is a basis for rejecting the bid for nonconformity. Number seven, prior to rejecting our bid as non-responsive, did you consult with the firm that collaborated on the creation of the RFP? Staff response, this also is not required. It is the city's RFP packet, reviewed and approved under the direction of the city, and the city is entitled to rely on the plain language of its own bid packet without consultation with non-parties. Number eight, does this council understand that many of the ambiguities herein are the direct result of the manner in which the RFP was advertised, directed, distributed, and interpreted? Staff response, Calciera has raised no specific issues as to how the manner in which the RFP was advertised, directed, or interpreted somehow created ambiguities as to requirements for bond conformity, subcontractor registration with the DIR, et cetera. The plain language of the bid packet speaks for itself as to these issues. If Calciera did not think something was clear or did not understand the language of the RFP, it had multiple opportunities to seek clarification from the city. It did not. Calciera should have been reasonably aware of the opportunity to seek prior clarification from the city if it had reviewed the bid packet instructions or read any of the city responses to 28 requests for clarification regarding the project. Number nine, will council consider a continuation of their decision until these questions are answered? Staff response, whether to continue the item is up to city council. However, at this time, we are not recommending that this item be continued. And the final question, what specification does your formal bid protest and appeal procedure follow? Staff response, there is no requirement to have a formal bid protest and appeal procedure. Unlike a finding of nonresponsibility, the process for rejection on the grounds of nonresponsiveness has minimal requirements as follows. A bidder determined to be non-responsive is entitled to notice of that fact and is entitled to submit materials in a manner defined by the city concerning, concerning the issues of responsiveness. The city is not required to conduct a hearing and need not produce findings. A city generally has the discretion to determine responsiveness and may demand strict compliance with the bid specifications, which promotes an even playing field for the entire bid community. The finding of nonresponsiveness should be memorialized as part of the award of contract. Here, the city has met and exceeded these requirements. The city provided Calciera notice of its nonresponsiveness and the fact it was entitled to respond almost a month, 27 days, before tonight's meeting. The city is not required to provide a hearing and has provided ample opportunity for Calciera to comment and submit materials. After waiting for more than 20 days from the city's notice, Calciera submitted a response last Friday after the agenda was published. Notwithstanding, the response was posted on the city's website and made available to the city council in public. Thereafter, Calciera submitted further comments a few hours ago despite operational restrictions on city resources from COVID-19. Although not required to answer questions, staff have responded to Calciera's written questions tonight. The basis for the finding of nonresponsiveness is further memorialized in the resolution for the word of the contract, which was also made publicly available and posted for tonight's meeting as part of the agenda. Now I got to get my breath.
I thought you were getting your breath too.
Through the mayor?
Ockmore? Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, Diana, but did you also have excerpts from the bid responses to show the city council?
I do. So the next few slides show actual excerpts from the bid responses. So, so by way of information, here are excerpts from the city's actual RFP regarding subcontractor registration, bid bonds, and bid responses. So this is actually taken from the special provisions. So in regard to authority to reject any bid, in its discretion, city council may reject any and all bids presented, may accept an item or group of items of any bid, may modify or cancel in whole or in part the notice inviting bids, and may determine to re-advertise for bids. Similarly, the city councilor's designee reserve the right to waive informalities and minor regularities in any bids received. And then the city's requirement to use city's proposal forms. So it notes in bold, if a contractor likes to submit a bid, the proposal form must be obtained from the city. Requirement to show unit prices, so unit prices shall be shown on bids submitted as well as a total price for each item upon the bid. So this is regard to the item where they actually wrote no bid instead of, you know, like a zero. Requirement for the subcontractor to be registered with DIR, it specifically says, no contractor or subcontractor may be listed on a bid proposal for a public works project unless registered with DIR. Again, related to the proposal form, all proposal forms shall be directly purchased from the city and shall be made upon the proposal forms included in these special provisions. So I think one thing that's important to explain, the sample on the bid bond is what's put out there on the website for people to be able to see the project. When you actually purchase the plans and specifications, that sample's removed from the bid bond, and you have a clean bid bond. This contractor purchased the plans and specifications, and so we're not sure why they used a bid bond that had sample written across, and then also provided another bid bond that didn't conform to the city requirements. Rejection of the proposals, proposals may be rejected if they show any alterations of form, additions not called for, conditional or alternative bids, incomplete bids, erasures, or irregularities of any kind. Also, the city reserves the right to waive any informality or regularity in any bidder bidding. And then in regard to the bid response identifying Garrett Painting and Sand Blasting as a subcontractor, you can see where they noted them right here. And so there was the DIR number, we look up the DIR number, and it's, they're shown as...
We need to take a break real quick, if we may? All right, so we'll go short recess for a few minutes. All right, we are all back. Thank you very much, and I will put us back into session. Shannon's back with us.
Okay. So we're going through excerpts from the actual bid package. So bid response providing a sample bond and another non-conforming bond without required language. So here is the sample bidder's bond that they submitted. So again, you have the watermark of sample. And then here's the other bid bond that they submitted, but the language is not conforming to the city's sample bid bond. And then here's the bid response where they actually submitted, wrote no bid instead of putting a dollar amount in there. And that's the, the end.
All right, well, thank you for that, and I confirm we have no further public comment. We can bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Well, I, through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Rules are rules. They've probably been through the bid process many a times with other organizations and cities. I've, working with the city, I've seen bids come through and stuff like that, and if, you know, you didn't dot the I R C R S T E, well, I'm just saying certain things, it's, it's nonvalid, and I believe staff's recommendation is proper. And after a few people comment on it, I'd like to make the motion to take staff's recommendation and take the other construction company to do our tanks. I'll let the other staff, council members speak before I make that motion.
I've got no further comment. Anybody can second? Or do you have a comment?
I think vice mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So this is both for Ms. Langley and for Shannon. Do we have to take an action first to reject the bid? I'm looking at, I'm looking at item 16 on our agenda, and it doesn't say anything in regards to the, the apparent non-responsive bid.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mayor Protim. If you look at item number B, that's the recommendation, it has a resolution, and one of the things that it does is it rejects the apparent low bid as unresponsive. And if you look at the resolution itself, it contains findings for rejecting the low bid as unresponsive based upon failure to have a registered subcontractor, the failure to provide bid bonds in performance with the city's requirements, and the no-bid issue or the, on the metals.
Okay, so no separate action on rejecting the bid. Given, given the volume of information that's been shared with us, would it be best to make a motion and read items A, B, C, and D? Or could we potentially say we make a motion to accept staff's recommendations, items A, B, C, and D?
Both of them are valid options.
Okay. I'll yield for any other questions.
Okay. Through, through the mayor. I am in agreement with Councilman Cardozo, but I just have with, if we were to accept the contract for the company FAR Construction, is it? Yes. FAR Construction Corporation, which is out in Nevada?
Yes.
Right, so this would be...
Correct?
Yes. So this would be under prevailing wage, correct, for labor?
Yes.
Right? So would Nevada hire people here locally, or would they bring in their own labor?
They have to meet the prevailing wage requirements regardless of where they're from. If they're doing public, public works projects in California, they have to meet the prevailing wage requirements regardless of where their home base is.
So I, I'm just thinking of some, you know, folks that here locally could utilize a really good paying job in the circumstances of our economy at the moment. So I was just wondering if, if, how many, do you know if there's going to be possibly how many jobs available with this contract?
Through the mayor, can I, I'm sorry, through the mayor, these are, this is a specialty company. They're specialized, so it's, it's, I'm sorry, Diana...
Councilman Cardozo, I think our city manager's...
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a specialty corporation.
And there's specialty people that are under prevailing wage, they can have that job.
I will say that we don't require that they hire a certain number of people locally. In, in public contract code projects, it's not a typical requirement that you would have to put a stipulation on there that they hire a certain number of people locally. Now, there are certain funding sources that require, have apprenticeship requirements, or they have disadvantaged business or requirements. This does not have any specialized funding. It's 100% paid for through the city's water fund, and so it's a very straightforward project in terms of, they do need to pay prevailing wage, but there are no requirements that they hire a specific number of people locally.
Okay, so you answered the question. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I just want to express my thanks to you, Ms. Langley, and you, Mr. Chaffin, because you obviously put a lot of work into this, trying to give Cal benefits of the doubts, but at the end of the day, requirements are the requirements. And I just want to say thank you for the work you guys have done on this and responsiveness. And back to the last comment, I mean, we, we talked about this at the prior council meeting, and Councilwoman Esmondola, I, I understand you, I value our union reps in this area, but we have to be really, really careful as a municipality, trying to tell companies, you know, or who they'll hire, who they want. We talked about it with, I think it was the LDS or something like that last time. Our job is to do what's in the best for the city, and we just hope that if the opportunity arises, the companies do use some local labor, but there's no way that we can tie that together. So anyway, I'm ready to move on.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make staff's recommendation of the Hard Tanks Painting Improvement Project 20-06, recommendations A, B, C, and D.
Second? All right, first and second. To approve staff's recommendation, A, B, C, and D. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None, thank you very much.
I would like to note that Claire Schauer is the project manager for this project, and so she has done a lot of coordination with the contractors. Kevin Bradford worked directly with the city attorney in terms of crafting their responses. And so I appreciate the, the recognition, but it's really Kevin and the city attorney and Claire that have been involved in this.
All right, thank you. I thank them. Moving on to item number 17, levying assessments for Yuba City Residential Street Light Maintenance Districts for the Walton and Tier Buena area. We have a, you want to do the presentation first?
Yes, please. So this item was brought before council at the last council meeting in July to set the public hearing for tonight. So these are our two residential streetlight districts, one in the Tier Buena area, which here's the map, the other in the Walton area. Both of these districts were formed while these areas were part of the county. When they were annexed into the city, the city took over the administration of the districts, and the districts did not have a cost of living adjustment within their formation documents, and so the levy, the assessments remained the same since the day it was implemented. And historically, they've been charged the maximum levy since around 2009. The engineer's annual report has been prepared, it's been provided to the city clerk's office, and the report describes each district, the improvements associated with each district, how the assessment was determined, and then how it's the proposed assessment for each parcel. You can see here in terms of the fiscal impact, the revenue for Tier Buena is $22,000. The expenditure is, slightly exceeds the revenues, but there's a reserve, you know, significant reserve fund balance in there that we can continue to supplement the overage for a period of years. And then on the Walton area, you can see that the revenue pretty much matches the expenditure, but there is a negative fund balance. So based upon the, the very minimal difference between the revenues and expenditures, it would take years to pay that off. However, we feel like there might be an issue, there is an issue with the Walton district, and so finance staff has requested a database from PG&E, and they are going through that database to see if we have our lights, you know, in the wrong district, or they're being charged to the wrong district, what's going on that we have this huge discrepancy in the Walton area. And so the item, the recommendation before, the alternatives for you tonight are to direct the modification of the assessment amounts. the modification of the assessment amounts, which we would not recommend, or to direct staff to follow legal procedures in order to modify the residential streetlight district. Also wouldn't recommend that at this point in time, based upon the reserve fund balance in Terre Boise, there's sufficient money there. And we'd like to get through this year in terms of analyzing the Walton district before we make any type of recommendation related to that district. So the recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy for fiscal year 2021 for the residential streetlight district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions so far. We go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on the items?
None received.
All right. And seeing none here, we will close that hearing no further. And now we can come back for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessment for fiscal year 202021 within Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Number One, Terre Boise, and Residential Streetlight Maintenance District Number One, Walton area.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. And opposed? None. All right. Move on to 18. Looks like we have one recusal.
Through the mayor. I reside in the subject area, and I will be recusing myself.
All right. Thank you very much. Same principle, levying assessments for Uba City Landscape Maintenance District Number One, which is the Stabler Lane slash Garden Highway area.
Yes, so before I get started with this presentation, we have received quite a few comments from the public. And so once we open the public hearing, I will read all of these comments, but I'll get into the presentation. So again, the, this is a landscape maintenance district, so it includes landscaping only, does not include streetlights. And the District 1A is north end of Stabler Lane. So for reference purposes, here's Stabler Lane, here's Queens Avenue, here's Pease Road. And so you have Jamie Drive that goes through here, Portofino that goes through here. And then District 1B is in the Garden Highway area. And again, here's Garden Highway. You have Lincoln Road right there, Boge Road, Shanghai Bend Road. So again, the assessments were approved by the property owners of record at the time the districts were formed. Zones of Benefit A and B were not formed with provisions for a cost of living adjustment. So when these districts were formed in the early 90s, the assessments were set and have not increased since then. There's also a District B1, which was recently formed. And, you know, why do we create a B1? Because there was a small annexation in that Garden Highway area. But because of, it was recently formed, we had the ability to add a COLA provision to that assessment. Again, the engineer's report was prepared and provided to the city clerk's office. In previous years, expenditures have exceeded revenues for Zones of Benefit A and B due to lack of COLA provisions. In the past, the city has addressed the negative fund balances by supplementing the zones with additional funding sources, whether it's from General Fund or Streets and Road Fund. But as we get into more difficult budget times, the proposal this year would actually be to reduce the services for 1B rather than request additional supplemental funds from either the General Fund or Streets and Road Fund for the upkeep. However, that is an option for council to consider. So the reductions in services are going to be extremely noticeable. And what you're going to hear from the comments tonight is that, you know, the public's not happy with how it looks right now. But, you know, with this reduction in terms of not supplementing the district, it's going to incur further degradation in terms of we'll be cutting off the water for several months during the winter. We'll just be addressing high-hazard trees. You'll see a reduction in terms of leaf pickup and trimming of shrubs. So it will be noticeable. And this doesn't even address replacing, you know, plants or trees that die. So, you know, going forward, the city does not have the resources based upon the current assessment in 1B to maintain it at the level, number one, that the residents would like to see, but even to maintain it at the level that we currently are. So one thing that, at the last council meeting, council requested that staff send a letter to the property owners within 1B. And so those letters were sent out last Monday to not only the property owners, but residents that are actually living at the property in case it's different from the owner. And the letters gave background on the formation of the zone of benefit, the fact that a Proposition 218 process took place in 2008, it was unsuccessful. The property owners did not want to add COLA provisions to their assessment. And so currently, each resident in 1B pays $29.50. If we were to cover the cost that it is to maintain, it would be $50 per year initially, plus applicable COLA increases as necessary. So you would see a $20.50 increase initially. So Zone of Benefit A, again, the revenue slightly exceeds the expenditures with the, with, you know, basically no fund balance. District B, the revenue is $65,937 with the expenditures of $62,676. This expenditure amount is based upon greatly reduced services. If you were to historically go back and look at how much we've paid outside landscape contractors to perform these services, it would be almost double that amount. But basically, we're going to be able to pay for about seven months of service with this amount. There is a fund balance in the district of $31,000, but staff recommends trying to maintain that to the extent possible because of unforeseen issues that might come up that need to be addressed. So staff recommends maintaining Zone of Benefit B reserve balance is noted. So moving forward, the city may be required to reduce maintenance levels in District One. You could transfer additional funds to the district to supplement the maintenance along that corridor. And then alternatives are to direct the modification of the assessment amounts or cancel the district, which we wouldn't recommend. Direct staff to follow Prop 218 procedure. And so Prop 218 procedure, for those that haven't gone through it, is pretty intensive in that there's specific notifications you need to make. You need to have basically an engineer's report that explains why you are proposing the assessments that you are. And then the property owners have the ability to vote on whether or not to move forward with a rate increase and then also adding COLA provisions. So if council were to go that direction, there would be a cost involved in hiring the appropriate folks to assist not only with the, you know, meeting the Prop 218 requirements. A third option would be to direct other funding sources to supplement the district. So the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 202021 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. And with that, we'd recommend to open the public hearing.
Question real quick. The ordering the annual levy, that's just to maintain that $61,000, which is the reduction in services?
Yeah, so when you're ordering the annual levy, we're levying them at the maximum amount as we have for years. And so that would go to the assessor, and they would place it on the tax rolls, and the property owners, as they're paying their taxes, would pay that assessment.
And that's what they're currently paying now? And that's what, and they're getting what they're paying for now, which they're.
Well, actually, right now, they're getting, you know, the city has supplemented the district. This would be the first year that I'm aware of where we would actually be providing the service, I should say, the first year in a while, that we'd be providing the service at the level that it's currently being funded by the property owners.
Okay. And then how much, I'm sure you said it in the slide, how much more do you need to get it where we would like, we would all like to have it?
It's estimated $50, and so it's about a $20.50 increase from where it is today.
What's the bottom line amount?
Oh, you know, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
It would be, I think, in the range of about $110,000, $120,000.
Okay, so significantly more than the reserve balance. Okay.
Yes, significantly more than the reserve balance.
All right, thank you.
And that wouldn't even address building up a reserve.
Right.
You know, that area also includes fencing, block walls. You know, over time, as those degrade, or you have people running into block walls that don't have insurance, you know, that also impacts the, there's not a capital reserve as well.
Removing hazard trees, and the list goes on.
Right.
All right, do you happen to remember or know, was there a reason behind not initially baking a COLA into this?
I don't. I know it goes back to the early 90s.
Long time ago?
And so, you know, I don't know if it was just the thought was that it would never, there probably wasn't a lot of forethought into the long term.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Get that water going.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we've received a series of emails. My name is Shannon Colbertson, and I am the property owner at 573 Shanghai Bend Road. I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed 70% increase of $20.50 in the annual cost per residence for lighting and landscape maintenance District One, Zone B. I have lived in and around this neighborhood since 1993 and have witnessed a steady decline in the condition of the landscaping, masonry walls, lighting, sidewalks, et cetera, during my time here. In fact, many of the trees along Garden Highway between Boge Road and Shanghai Bend Road have been removed just this year. The median landscape strip along the same segment is buckled in multiple places and has been for many years. The fountain at the entrance to my subdivision has been non-functioning for as long as I can recall and is pretty unsightly in its decayed state. I would like to know how much of the funds collected annually for Zone B have been spent maintaining physical infrastructure versus what was spent performing landscape maintenance? Is the proposed cost increase a one-time increase, or will the annual cost be reassessed on a regular schedule? It appears the city is using a contracted landscape company for routine landscape maintenance. The council should require public work assess the cost of these services and look for cost savings. Has the city analyzed the cost of using city employees versus contracted services? Can the contracted services be renegotiated? Has the city considered removing the existing landscaping, which requires frequent maintenance and replacing it with low-maintenance water-wise plants? This would reduce the long-term maintenance costs long and would help meet state goals to use less water. Also, what are the city's plans to address the infrastructure, which is damaged and no longer functioning? I don't feel the funds I contribute have been used wisely, and I don't feel confident throwing more money at the problem would be beneficial for anyone. If you have any question, if you have questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me.
I have a question. You have several letters, and I'm probably going to forget by the time I get to the end of all of them. Would the, the proposal of increase of $20.50, would that essentially address things like the fountain and whatnot that are brought up? Or we just kind of trim the bushes and mow the lawn?
That's really to basically maintain the landscaping the way we are. That does not get that fountain functioning again. It doesn't address the raised sidewalk issues. And, you know, I just want to note that the city goes through a request for proposal process to hire the landscape contractor that contracts those services. And so the contractor that's out there has been the, basically, the low bidder through that process. Community services staff did evaluate what it would cost for the city to provide the landscape maintenance, and it's significantly higher than what we pay the landscape contractor to do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next, next comment. This is from Gus Becerra. As a property owner in the reference district, we support the increase of the annual assessment from $29.50 to $50 in order to maintain the necessary landscaping, irrigation, masonry walls, ornamental lighting, and lighting and landscape District Number One, Zone of Benefit B. The current annual assessment of $29.50 was set in 1990, and we understand costs have increased significantly since then. We don't believe the general fund should have to supplement the financial gap, and therefore, RHA supports the proposed increase. So that's on behalf of the Regional Housing Authority. The next comment is from Lane Anderson. Hello, I would like to submit comments in regards to the additional funding needed for lighting and landscape District One, Zone B, which will be an agenda item in this evening's public hearing. I am a homeowner living in Zone B, and I am in favor of raising the tax rate in order to keep Zone B maintained. Letting the maintenance lapse due to insufficient funds is not acceptable to me because it would reflect poorly on our city and also likely decrease our property values. Furthermore, I feel the rate increase being proposed by the Public Works Department is reasonable, considering it has not been adjusted in 30 years. The increase will be a minimal expense for property owners, just $1.70 per month, and for that small cost, our neighborhoods and properties will all benefit. Thank you for your time. The next item is going to be an email exchange between this person and then Kevin Bradford, and then a response from this person. This is from Mary Ann Lewis. I am a homeowner at 2252 Stony Brick Drive. We have lived in our home for 24 years. This is the first I have heard of a problem with the lack of funds to maintain the Garden Highway. I am not sure if a vote is being taken by the landowners or the city council. It was not clear in the letter we just received Monday, August 17, 2020. If the vote is taken tonight and it is landowners in that area, how do we cast our vote? And is it one vote per residence, or is it based off of how many people are on the title? Our household consisting of three adults is in favor of a tax increase of $20.50 to provide services to this landscape. Any information would be helpful. And then Mr. Bradford responded. Thank you for your inquiry, and I apologize for any confusion in the letter you received. The vote being taken tonight is solely by the city council and is regarding solely whether or not to continue to assess the maximum possible levy of $29.50 on each residence. Prior to tonight's vote by city council, a public hearing will be held to give members of the public an opportunity to convey their input on the matter if desired. The only way your tax will ever increase in this landscape district is if, at some point in the future, our city council decides to move forward with a Proposition 218 vote. In this case, you would receive separate and more specific information regarding the Proposition 218 voting process, with ample time to review the process and cast your vote. Ms. Lewis responded. I would certainly like to see the Garden Highway landscaping to continue to be taken care of and would like to see a Proposition 218 vote so the homeowners can vote. The condition of landscaping affects our home values and makes the area more appealing for walking and just being outside. Okay. The next one is from Baldev Chima. My name is Baldev Chima. I own property in your District One, Zone B. I received your letter in the mail yesterday, August 17, 2020. Your meeting is today. This is a less than one full-day notice. This is in violation of the proper noticing provisions. I think you are well aware of this, and so are the residents of Uba City. I will be joined in your online meeting. As this is improper notice, any action you may take on the rate increase will be null and void. Your lack of insight for the COLA provisions is a clear indication of how your city manager and council members have no brains to manage Uba City. Your council members have only one goal, and that is to fill their own pockets and get their property zoned into the city limits to increase its value. Those members who own a business in the city want to increase their influence by getting elected to the council so that that can increase their customer base. They do not care about improving Uba City or the well-being of its residents. I am not in favor of any increase for this benefit district. During these COVID times, people are having a tough time just putting food on the table, and you want them to give you more money for lighting and landscaping. Which planet did you all come from? I entered the above comments as part of your meeting records for tonight's meeting. May God give your management more sense. This next one is from Trip Leest, and I apologize if I'm saying the last name incorrectly. Please, we have been paying taxes for lighting and landscaping for years. All of a sudden, in the height of the summer, suddenly there is no funding for these vital services. Lighting is a basic safety issue. The landscaping maintenance, parentheses, water, ensures the appeal of the roadways in our city. In addition, it adds to the value of our property. A little over a month ago, the city paid to have the plants trimmed, only to immediately turn off the water and let the plants die. If the budget is tight, water is the primary expenditure. Without it, the plants die. Providing water to plants is vastly less expensive than replacing the plants at a later date. All you have to do is turn on the water and raise the rate if you need to. It's only an extra $20 a year. One single tree is twice that. Thank you. The next one is from Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Mann. We would like to express a comment at tonight's, August 18, 2020, city council meeting regarding the annual levy of District One, Zone B, for landscaping maintenance. We concur that the annual fee needs to be raised from $29.50 to $50 per residence per year. As a homeowner at 2320 Stephen Way, I consider this a nominal yearly fee and a very good way to spend the money. It's important to the community to have nice landscaping along our roadways, in this case, the Garden Highway between Lincoln Road and Diamond Point Way. We hope you'll approve the city public works department's request for this fee increase. This is from James Victor. And it says, a resident's comments and/or questions. Ladies and gentlemen of Uba City, cost of living adjustments was mentioned in the main body of your letter and a reason you want money. My question is, whose cost of living allowance are the city's officials referencing? And also, what is your definition of cost of living adjustments? As we may have different definitions respectfully, please be specific. As we may have different definitions respectfully, please be specific. The mistake referenced in your letter, the city did not, parentheses, failed to include provisions, is exactly that, a failure and/or mistake maybe. Regardless, we are discussing the residents who reside in the area and their money. Residents who reside in the mapped area respectfully. Sometimes mistakes are made, even by city officials. Parentheses, mismanagement, take your pick. Respectfully, I believe mismanagement by professionals should not be put on the backs of citizens residing in the area District Number One. What did the city do in other areas where new housing was being established? Did city officials make similar errors? I am confident our city has many other sources of revenue and that maintenance costs in this district can and should be readily absorbed into the city's budget respectfully. Again, leave the citizens residing in this area alone in relation to city mismanagement problems. To be blunt, it is unfair tactics being used on our own, period. In addition, city water costs are already out of control and continue to be used on the citizen for additional city revenue. But then, that is another subject on another day, I guess. In closing, city officials are incorrect at requesting any additional monies for subject maintenance referenced in your letter. I vote no. And then we have from Julie Wilson. I have lived in Feather River State since 1993. For the first five years or so, friends and relatives who came to visit from out of town would drive up Garden Highway from the south and marvel at how pretty Garden Highway was. Sadly, their enthusiasm for the area was short-lived. After about five years, I started to notice a decline in maintenance. Drip lines would go un-repaired and plants would die. Dead plants would be removed but never replaced, and the drip line would go un-repaired. There are now large swaths in District B with 50% or less of the original vegetation. For at least 15 years, my husband has been keeping the plants at the entrance of our subdivision alive by carrying two five-gallon buckets of water out there from our home every few days. He should not have to do that, but he does because he understands the impact that landscaping has on property values. I would have most certainly requested COLA adjustment in 2008 if I had been aware of public hearings to do so. I would have this not only to preserve our property values, but also to save costs of 30 to 50 gallons of water a week on our ever-increasing water bill. As a homeowner, I am more than happy to pay the additional $20.50 to properly maintain the landscaping. I am asking the city councils, please vote in favor of modifying the rates in District B, including COLA provision. Anything less is a vote to lower our property values. In addition, I would like the city council to discuss how the city plans to correct years of neglect in Zone B. When will the plants that have been removed or be replaced? And when will the drip lines be systematically tested, repaired, or replaced? At this time, I would like to take a moment to also address the public works method of communication. Despite being dated August 7, 2020, I only received the letter August 14, and my neighbors received theirs just yesterday. This makes me wonder how many residents have not yet received their letter. In addition, a letter sent to current resident is likely going to be assessed as junk and never opened. It's also not going to land in the hands of property owners of rentals who live out of town. These people are not being given a voice. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you vote to save our property values. And then I believe we have another one that came in that I'm going to read from email. Hello, my name is Lizeth Ramirez, and I have the following questions and concerns. The letter I received states, moving forward, if the city is unable to raise rates in Zone B, it will no longer be able to maintain Zone B to an acceptable level due to insufficient funding. This may result in plants dying due to the lack of irrigation and overgrowth of shrubs and trees in these areas and weeds becoming more prevalent in these areas. Today, I took a drive down this corridor just to take pictures of this area. The pictures demonstrate the above statement made by you, City of Yuba City officials. Although there are areas in this corridor that look well-manicured, the majority of the corridor looks atrocious and, from my point of view, extremely unacceptable. There are overgrown shrubs, dried shrubs, weeds, garbage, graffiti on concrete wall, concrete raised to the degree of pedestrianism I'm able to walk on. My question is, if this is already happening, what or who is going to guarantee us, the residents in Zone B, that with the fee increase, this entire corridor will look extremely well-manicured with absolutely no weeds, no garbage, no graffiti, et cetera? I have no problem paying $50 a year to keep the entire corridor looking great. Let me emphasize that with the fee increase, my personal expectation skyrockets to see this area clean enough to par. No more mediocrity in the maintenance of the entire area, not just select areas which meet certain criteria. And she attached pictures, so we will provide those pictures to council as a follow-up email. And with that, I'm not sure if we have any additional comments.
We have one more that's come on the line. Okay, this is from Heather Eschman. As a resident of Yuba City that has often driven to work in this area in the past, it's clear that many residents are unhappy with the current status. I hope the council will think outside the box and, if necessary, conduct the 218 to get the true opinion of the area.
All right, and just confirming that was the only thing we have pending? No more?
No more.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I have one question done. I'm sure there's a lot of people watching tonight. We're raising our proposal to raise the rates by $20.50 a year?
No, we're not. So the action before you tonight is just to, basically, confirm the current assessment amount for Districts 1A, 1B, and then 1B1, and then order the annual levy of assessments? So it's going to remain the same assessment that they've been paying for years? As an alternative, or as an additional option, what council could do, if they so choose, is to direct staff to explore the process of going through a Proposition 218 process?
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, and so there was confusion. You can tell from the correspondence in terms of that tonight council is going to be making decision related to increasing the rates, and that's absolutely not true. And we apologize if the letter created confusion. But the action tonight is just to continue with the current rates as they are, recognizing that and so doing, and not supplementing the district with additional revenues, that the level of maintenance is going to decline significantly further than what it is today.
All right, so that was going to be my question to help clarify. We're not raising rates. In order to do that, we have to do 218?
Yes.
And do you have any guesstimation what that would cost the city to put that forward?
I would guess in the tens of thousands of dollars, just from the standpoint that you need to have an engineer's report. And so we would, you know, one option would be to reach out to our current consultant that prepares that. There's also a lot of attorney, attorney time involved in terms of preparing the notices for the, because there's a couple of different notices that have to go out to the residents and then staff time associated with it. And so, you know, I can't say in terms of what it would be, but my guess would be in the, you know, it would be, if I were to have to guess, I would say it'd be less than $50,000, but there would be a significant cost associated with it.
Okay. It's important for whoever's watching to understand that we're gonna, you're gonna, we have, in order to get more, to get better maintenance, we're going to have to do the 218 process, which is about 50-ish thousand dollars to get it there. And that's if it's approved.
Right, and I just want to note, in 2008, when we went through that process, it was not approved by the residents.
Okay, any other further, sir?
Through the mayor. Thank you for bringing, Mr. Mayor, the clarification, because you could tell that there was a lot of confusion on that. And we're not making, you know, a doubling of the rate decision tonight as some people were alluding to. But I think the first thing, and I got a text earlier with a picture of the letter, picture of the envelope. We owe the people down there in District One an apology because while the letter was dated August 7, the postmark that was sent to me earlier was Friday, the 14th. And many people just got it yesterday. And while this isn't fixing the big picture, I would hope that we could get things out more timely in the future because it bodes not well for us when they get it the day before a council meeting.
I'd like to note that it was mailed from our office on last Monday.
Okay, I can share this, I can share that with you later. It was, the one I got today was August 14th, was the metered.
The staff, actually, I'm going to go into detail here because staff worked the previous Friday to get all of the envelope stuff so that we could have it out at least a week in advance in terms of mailing it out. So it is disappointing that it's postmarked on Friday and that they received it Monday because we did mail it, you know, a little over a week in advance.
Okay. But with that being said, because I know people were alluding to the whole fact of it the 17th and the 14th. First of all, we apologize. But we're not here tonight to decide if the rate goes from $29.50 to $50. It's whether or not we're going to leave it to $29.50. But it leads into a much bigger discussion, and you alluded to it, Ms. Langley, and that was, in '08, we tried this. You know, it's not that there are inept leaders here today. This goes back 30 years that this problem started. There wasn't a one of us in this room that was here making those decisions 30 years ago that did not have the adjustments there, that did not let it increase. And so, over 30 years, everything has gone up. Gas, insurance, everything. So to think that we can continue with the same level of service that we've had over the years with still paying the 1990 fee is a, it's inconceivable because all over the city, each district takes care of their own maintenance, as you've been showing going through this, but their levy or their maintenance assessments and lighting assessments. The bigger picture is, I agree with the mayor, we have to look at the 218. We have to conduct, once we're through the COVID situation, we need to have public hearings, not just here in the chambers, but go down to District One, go down to where the residents are because we've been actually hearing from different residents down there about how atrocious the landscaping is. And so we need to go to them and at our first opportunity to where we can have a large gathering. Not to sit around and complain for an hour, but let's talk about what the real solution is going to be. Are we going to go to more low-maintenance type of landscaping to where it will, long-term, cost us less? See if we can get the residents as a whole, if their sentiment is, you know, if they want to have the beautification, then they need to clearly understand that we're not trying to make any money off this. We're trying to keep that section of town beautiful. And it's not what it once was, but it's because we're paying 30-year-old rates. So we need to work together with them so they understand that and come up with a solution. If I can go even further, as the vice mayor myself has been going through the budget ad hoc, and we know how tight our budget is, this wasn't suddenly in 2020 in the summer in a heat wave that, oh, we're suddenly out of money. This has been a problem brewing for 30 years. And COVID has done to us what it's done to everyone else around. Finances get tight. So we're having to look at this squarely and go, this is the issue that we have. But as we get clearer numbers, I think the council could take it upon us to look, to see if we could continue to subsidize it to a certain level until we can go through the 218 process. And then, once we go through that, it's really up to the people of that district. If they want the improvements and they want the nicer landscaping, then they'll have to go through that process so that we can pay realistic fees for this day and age. If it doesn't, then that's what that area of town will, they can only afford what they are raising the revenues for. But this is one that we have to include the residents of District One because ultimately, we need to go to 218. They need to make the decision. And then we need to execute what they say. But I think we need to try to find it somewhere as we move forward to just try to get us through this bridge time, so.
Through the mayor, thank you. I just have a real basic, a couple of basic questions. In reading the letter, as I'm listening and I read it before and talked, I'm, the presentation and the letter are just not matching in my understanding of it. If I'm a community member, like many I am, no wonder there's a sense of confusion that there is an increase occurring. But it really, what we're asking is the diagram and a resolution. Am I simplifying it?
The item before you tonight is to confirm and order the annual levy.
Right, just the diagram area and the...
The levy amount.
And the levy amount, that's it. I, and I'm, I'm reading the letter, and I would say to all the individuals that wrote to us and bringing this to us, I thank you for the time and energy in doing that. And I do recognize that the letter, the letter that was sent out to the residents, and I'm not just speaking of district when I'm talking about all the multiple districts because every district has a different need and, excuse me, and challenge that we're reviewing. But in this particular district, it's confusing to me to read this letter and then why our constituents were questioning the potential raise. 218 is the direction that if the raise was to occur, and at this moment, I support just the boundary and the resolution, but there's no raise to it, according to the way I'm reading this.
If we decide to go 218 process, does that decision have to be made right now for staff direction? Or can we?
No.
Okay. I definitely echo what Councilmember Shaw said. I think it's been 12 years, it looks bad. That's kind of a gateway to the city if you come in via Garden Highway. If I live there, I definitely want everything, including the sidewalk and the aforementioned fountain, to be working, as intended. And I think it's important that we give them an opportunity to decide if they would like that. And also gives us an opportunity to, excuse me, to communicate that to them.
Right, so the $50 is based upon basically maintaining what's there. If council's wanting to also evaluate what it would take to get the fountain running, to either modify the landscaping or increase the landscaping, that that's different. And that would likely be a higher assessment. And so if that's the direction that council would want to go, then, you know, it would still be the same process, but it would, I just want to be very clear, that $50 would not support that.
Right, and I guess we can have the conversation later, but I'd like to give a maybe a list of options if we're able to do that. One is the Full Monte, you know, looking really pristine and then something a little bit above what we're going to be able to provide, or actually, a lot above what we're going to be able to provide, even if we keep things the same.
So we did, this is, so down on Bog Road, southwest portion of town, the residents, the landscaping along Bog Road was an issue. We went forward, gave the residents, and just very, there aren't a lot of people that live on the street adjacent to, gave them some different options. We could not get clear consensus whatsoever in terms of they wanted, the direction they wanted to go. So we can definitely put different options out there. Just expect that you're going to have a multitude of responses, which makes it difficult in terms of making a decision in terms of the direction we're going to go.
Yeah, because you can't really, you have to vote yes or no. You can't say, I vote for option A. That's the tough part.
You can do an informal to try to gauge...
And that's where you get the chaos.
And that's where you get the chaos.
Man, all right. But we hear them, they, you know, one, you know, it was brand-new back there. It seems like yesterday, apparently, it was a couple of decades when that was all brand-new. I mean, it looked nice, and when you move in, you assume it's going to stay that way. And it just, it just takes money. All right. That being said, any other comment?
I'm just going to let council know that the fountain down there at Shanghai Bin and Garden Highway, the reason why it's not running is because it was vandalized so many times, we couldn't keep up with it.
All right, that's good to know. That could potentially be part of the modification process. I know low-water planning is very popular nowadays. So, all right.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
If you're ready for a motion, sir?
Yep, ready.
All right, and to be clear, the adoption is to just keep the rates the exact same amount they've been for 30 years. But with that, I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2020, 21, pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
First and second, to all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, none, all right. I'm sure we'll be hearing about this again. Completely understand that. And we are getting Vice Mayor Boomgarden. And with that being said, I need to step out on this one. Or actually, we both do.
Myself as well, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Through the vice mayor.
But of course, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. If we could clarify that the two councilmembers that just left the room did so because they live within the jurisdiction and district. live within the jurisdiction and district, and that's the reason why they're accusing themselves.
Do I need to say that, or did you just say it for me?
I, I just said, thank you so much.
No, thank you. Lot of fires going on out there, lot of ash flowing and falling in Yuba City, so, well, I'm sure we'll talk about that later this evening. Item nineteen, levying assessments for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, numbers two, three, four, and five, Town Center and sixty-nine subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, number six, the Commercial District, presented by Diana Langley.
Yes, so as noted, District Two is in the Town Center area, Districts Three, Four, and Five are residential districts, and then District Six is a commercial district. So, again, the city annually levies assessments within these districts to maintain lighting and landscaping. The assessments were approved by the property owners, and there are COLA provisions included in these districts. The engineer's report has been prepared. Districts Two, Three, Five, and Six, with the exception of Zone Benefit A and District Five, will see increases in their annual levies, while District Four, which is up at the north end of Stabler in the Regency Park area, will see a decrease. Levies raised in response to inflation, District Four's levies is proposed to be decreased due to sufficient reserves and revenue that exceed expenditures. So, when you look at the fiscal impact, you can see that the revenues and expenditures, for the most part, are pretty balanced for the districts, and with the exception of the Town Center area, there's a healthy reserve in the districts as well. The reserve fund balance includes not only a capital replacement reserve, but also an operating reserve. An alternative would be to modify the assessment different than the proposed amounts. And then, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy and assessments for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Langley? Seeing none, go ahead and open the public hearing to levying assessments for Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts, number two, three, four, and five, Town Center and sixty-nine subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts, number six, Commercial District, is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Mrs. City Clerk, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
None received.
Okay, wait maybe a few seconds, just in case. Give it one more check, please.
None received.
Okay. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing back the matter to the council.
Through the Vice Mayor. I give staff's recommendation and top resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy assessments fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one for the Yuba City Lighting Landscape Maintenance Districts, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, Town Center, sixty-nine subdivisions throughout the city, including Palisite Subdivision, Beavista Neighborhood, and Commercial District.
Second.
At a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Item nineteen passes, three, two, I said aye, two, three, zero. That was better than you.
Twenty.
My bad, sorry. Even better, number twenty, CDBG Consolidated Plan, actually, twenty-twenty-four, it's Consolidated Plan, the twenty-twenty-one Annual Action Plan. Welcome, Ben.
All right, so, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. So, the item before you was before you back in June, and it's back before you with a little tweak on item regarding Recommendation C. So, before you tonight is, is really to conduct a public hearing to receive comments for the twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Plan, the twenty-twenty-one Action Plan, Analysis of Impediments for Fair Housing Choice, to consider the adoption of the Resolution approving and authorizing staff to submit these documents to HUD, allocating six-hundred-and-sixty-six, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars in CDBG funds for twenty-twenty-one, and then consider approving staff to move forward with preparing and accepting application for the CARES Act CDBG CV funding, and appointing two councilmembers to participate on an ad hoc CDBG CV review and recommendation committee. So, and with the purpose of the HUD money, when it comes through this community development block, is basically to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunity for low-income and moderate-income persons. So, that's the, the basis of the HUD CDBG program. And so, with that, I'm going to power through this a little bit with prior review, but please stop me, and I could go through it in more detail depending on what level anybody's interest. And so, so with that, we're designated as an entitlement city, and so with that, we get a formula-based CDBG funding every year. And so, typically, that starts in, in January, through process, through applications, we send out, and then we, we go through an application review process, and then we make a recommendation and work through the HUD guidelines in order to be here before you today. So, so, as stated earlier, the priority for the funding is for low- and moderate-income individuals. There's a basis for that, and so, fifty-nine-thousand-five-hundred is what that threshold is in Yuba City, based on the nineteen, twenty-nineteen Yuba City MSA income limits. So, so with this, there's a requirement for that five-year consolidated plan. The plan was due, was, was expired this summer, and so, with that, we've, we've developed a new plan, and, and with that, a proposed annual action plan that then designates this funding to comply with that CON plan, Consolidated Plan. So, and with that, there's a, there's an analysis of impediments for, for housing choice, which looks at, sees, looks to see if there's any sort of barrier or any, any specific issues in our region or in our area that's impediment for fair housing. So, we developed the five-year consolidated plan. Basically, these, these are the priorities before you, they're not specific or in order, and we've designated them as all those priorities, and so, anything in this, so, when this funding comes through annually, we're basically trying to hit the, besides CDBG's goals of having it be for low-income and for housing and the betterment of the environment for the, for low-income individuals, the CON plan basically establishes our own citywide priorities. So, as, as discussed this year, the twenty-twenty-one allocation is six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand and change. There's particulars regarding the use of the fund, funds, only twenty percent is maximum for administration, fifteen to be allocated for public services, and then there's a, there's some thresholds with direct, based on these census tracts, where the money has to be specifically within these certain areas in order to qualify. So, quick rundown through the past processes, the, you know, there was, there was, so for this year, there was a notice early in, in the winter, January, February timeframe, there was a public workshop on February nineteenth, funding applications were in March, staff committee reviewed the applications, March twenty-six, people draft, prepared draft consolidated plan, and then we came to council in, in June. And so, at the regular meeting in June, there was input from council and recognition, recognition of the COVID and economic situation that, can we relook at any of the funding, just to see where there's mutual benefits for city needs, and then where we could leverage other opportunities, that maybe we could match the funding allocation to a city need. And so, with that, there was some discussion about Fire Station One, a roof, an anticipated roof repair, and then also Fire Station Two needed ADA improvement and various other work at Fire Station Two, with public facility improvements being in our CON plan and a priority for the city. And so, staff went back, we, we worked with the fire department, and due to the schedule for the roof, it was already bid, and contractors were basically ready to go, it wouldn't meet this funding criteria. For this funding, once we approve it tonight, it's really another three-month process before it goes back to HUD, gets approved, comes back to us, and then we go out through a federal bid process for forty-five days, which puts you right in the middle of wintertime, that's, that's, it gets complicated. So, the roof was pretty much out the, the door for this, for this round. The Fire Station Two, that one got complicated because it was in, it's not in a designated census tract, and then the particulars of the ADA improvements, not being necessarily readily available to the public, with it being closed, it, it was, it was a little tricky. And so, when we looked at that, and we talked to HUD, HUD basically told us it didn't meet their national objective, and it wouldn't follow into that criteria for applicability. But with that, when we were there, there was definitely a need for equipment, especially with potential ties to the COVID situation, where there's rooms for storage, decontamination when, when firefighters are responding to calls, where that area could be stored, and there's mutual benefit for, an area for that turnout. And so, we think that would be a potential project for the CDBG CV money. And so, not necessarily for the, the standard CDBG money, but with the CV. And then also, we looked at the current CIP and where we could fit, and so, you, you could definitely, it's hard to find something that meets the goals of HUD with low-income and housing as the goal for CDBG, and then also meet the timelines and the processes. And with that, we're looking for, there's, there's, we definitely recognize that there's, there's safety projects and small, other projects around the city that maybe we could find this twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars, but due to the timeframe and the noticing where the CDBG CV money, we're going to be wanting to issue applications for, to try to spend that money, and then with new CDBG money rolling in with the process starting in January, we think the best way to proceed is to take input, for sure, but to move forward with the plan today with approval on how this has been noticed and how it's been approved. And then, it look for, work internally with staff going forward for any of those small projects that meet the goals of the CON plan and the CDBG, and make sure we, we push to implement those in the next rounds that are coming. And so, with this round, it's really deja vu. It's, it's what's, was proposed before. The difference in that is that Regional Housing Authority has reached out to us and said, since June, there's been unanticipated, unexpected costs related to the public housing on Richland, at Richland Housing, due to sewer lateral, needed sewer lateral repairs. And so, instead of using the funds just for one apartment rehab, the, they're asking to, the potential to amend their, their application for the same public housing, but to basically use it towards the sewer lateral pair, which would benefit seven units for, for that amount for, and so, and so with this, this is the, the dollar amount here is what you're seeing for the allocation of this year's funds with, as broken out, and I could definitely go into detail that more. And in addition, with, in addition to that, this money with the criteria that's basically you're supposed to spend it within one year. And so, you get it, you're supposed to spend it by June thirtieth, they start beating you up if you don't spend it within that year, and they usually give you a little bit of a grace period, up to two years. And so, with that, we have some old money sitting in a twenty-eighteen owner-occupied rehab program that is, there's about twenty-five thousand dollars in there that we think would be better used, and then it would also meet the need of regional housing. And so, that's where the recommendation would, it does us a benefit because it gets it off the books of being the old money, and then it also benefits the Regional Housing Authority's project application with it matching what their request was. So, that's what the first transfer, and the second transfer is, there's, there's old money that was slated from admin. So, every year, we take this generic twenty percent admin cut for time administration, and so, where that money doesn't get spent, we're requesting this fifty-five thousand dollar amount to be put into the ADA sidewalk project. And so, to, to go back to a little bit about this transfer, and the, and the total amount for the, for the Regional Housing Authority is, and there's some confusion, I believe last time when I, I talked about the transfer from the twenty-five thousand dollars from this owner-occupied rehab program, that is a city program, that's a loan program. Basically, there's, there's money that goes into this, there's money that goes into this pot, and then people can apply for it, and we give them a low-interest loan with a long-term repayment for low-income individuals, and they pay that back over time. And so, so the community development grant money, this is a development block grant, and so, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand comes in, but with this, over, at various times in the past, when twenty-eighteen, we've put a little bit of money into this separate loan program. But the standard six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand CDBG money is grant money, one-time money that goes off. But since it's not being, since that's a city program, this owner-occupied program, that's not getting it, that's, with this last year and a half, we haven't received any applications for that loan money. There, that money's sitting in there and starting to get stale with CDBG telling us we have to have it spent. So, to add a little bit to that, and the loans, it's a little difficult, because with the money being low mod, for low, moderate-income folks, you get a lot of nonprofits that apply for it, and you get, such as HUD agencies. And so, my understanding is that, so, for HUD agency, a property like RHA, there, there's deed restrictions, we're not, they're not allowed to go into a debt service, or it's complicated to go into a, to a loan for that. Or, and then you have just nonprofits that aren't interested in, in taking on a, a loan or a, or a debt service like Freed or, or Habitat for Humanity. So, adding a new project, so, we can add a new project, so if, if right now, we want to say, hey, Ben, I got fifty thousand bucks, twenty-five thousand bucks, you need to do a new project. You know, we can probably find something that's, hey, let's go put some new handrails at Fire Station One. You know, is it, it, would it be a rush? You know, you'd probably have, because it's not planned out, it's not quite figured out how it's going to line up. It would be, it would match the intent of our priorities, but it wouldn't really match the intent of the CDBG money being for housing and, and for low, moderate use. And so, I could do that, to be straightforward, what would that do? It would probably make about a forty-five-day delay, because I'd have to go find this project, make sure it applies, renotice it, come back to you guys again, or amend, or amend the plan and then move forward. And so, where I'm at is that with the intent of the funds for the low mod and the housing, and the applications being out for this year, and being so close to the CDBG CV money coming out, and the, the next year with the, with the January release, basically, of the new money, it might be better served to work with the internal departments and really nail down what project ties into their future goals. You know, how do we, how do we make sure it applies, and how does it move forward with it, so we're not holding up this, this remaining six-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus projects? So, here's some detail regarding the city staff program. It just talks about the, the hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, we haven't hit that number rarely often, I don't know if ever, I know finance talks to us every year about not hitting our funding goal, and so, but we definitely look at that, and we utilize it, and then anything, money that's left over, we allocate next year, and typically into projects to get it off the books. Hundred thousand dollars is, is the maximum amount, fifteen percent to the homeless consortium, to the various uses there on the right. And then we have the recommended funding levels with the transfers. And so, with the asterisks next to them, you have the fifty thousand dollar amount, and then the two-seventy-nine with ADA sidewalks with the money coming in. And so, CDBG CV funds, and so, this is what the CARES Act, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars was distributed through a formula. With that, there's, as we talked, there's a lot of particulars regarding the coronavirus and meeting CDBG, and so- And so with that, the city, there's a deadline to allocate this by August 2021. So we have till next year to, to determine how we're going to spend it. And then you'll have the year, the two years to spend it. And so right now there's been a lot of different ideas, um, with the particulars on, on how to, um, where that money could be the most usefully spent. And so with that, we're proposing that, that you, with our recommendation C is that you authorize staff to go out and start the application process, to start advertising for it and receive input, but then also appoint two, um, city council members onto this review ad hoc committee so we can work through some of the needs and bring a recommendation back to the council with, with the various needs that come through from, um, fire, fire additional building space for fire department needs, from economic development, small grants to help with COVID-related issues to, um, the, you know, there's, there's some interest in there right now that we, we have, I believe Diana mentioned 962 delinquent utility accounts, around $350,000. And there's, there's options where small grants could go to pay up to six months' worth of, um, utility payments that are delinquent. And so there's, um, there's a mutual benefit there where the money helps the constituents and then it also comes back to the city. And so there, there's a lot of those, um, various priorities out there. And so with that, we would, um, we're looking to develop that ad hoc committee so we could talk about it, kind of work through it and then come back to council with the recommendation. So with that, um, I'm recommending items A, B, and C and be happy to answer any questions.
Can you go back to your, um, thank you, Ben. Can you go back to, um, your detail slides, please? And there was one reference, s, on the, oh, go one down, one more, yeah. Under consultant services, could you just explain what COC coordinator is for me?
COC coordinator, it's...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
So I'm...
Scott Thurman, that's Scott Thurman Consulting.
So it's not for the executive director position, it's for the Thurman Consulting that, that provides services for?
Okay. And then, um, I, I do think there's probably more discussion in regards to your bolded, uh, deal on the executive director salary. Um, I know that I, I have made myself pretty clear in regards to monies that we are allocating to CB, CDBG go towards direct services rather than staff. Uh, so I don't know what you mean by there is ongoing discussion. Are you looking for more direction from this council or, help me understand that one?
So right now you, you have very good eyes, Mr. Bloomberg, Councilmember. I, this is an old slide that I didn't, I didn't take off the bold on that. And so that's probably from June. And so right now we haven't received any direction more than what their application was. So that $100,000 is specifically for those four, um, items below. And, and basically anything to do with the executive director's salary would need to come back to city council. They've, they've requested that and the plan is to bring that back to city council for consideration on how you fund it. But with this allocation right now, it's specifically for consultant services, 15,276 for Scott Thurman, uh, coordinated entry for the front desk at 7,635, the rapid rehousing and then emergency shelter operations.
Okay, so there isn't any of that 100,000 that's currently programmed for the executive director?
Correct. So the, their scope of their application is just for those four, and if we approve it, they will have to spend that money on that scope.
Okay, then, uh, I think it was your second or third slide that talked about the eligible programs. There you go. So I, I, again, and this goes back to the, um, work that Councilman Shaw and I have been doing with the budget. And, you know, the city of Yuba City, um, is, is, gets to coordinate the distribution of the CDBG funds that are allocated to us based on whatever formulas are out there. And I think that in the past, uh, and I'm going to speak from personal experience as well, I'm not sure that that was completely opened up to staff, um, for their use. And in talking with, uh, um, some folks on staff, I, I, I find that perhaps, um, CDBG funds weren't opened up, uh, or the application for CDBG funds wasn't necessarily as well-known as it possibly could have been. Um, so I'm encouraged by the fact that you're, you're, you're moving in that direction. I agree with where you're headed with this cycle because it, it, we're down the road, but I would certainly think that as a city, we need to take care of ourselves and we definitely have the need to do so. Um, so I think opening up the process and making sure that our city staff and our city departments are fully engaged in their ability to apply, um, for CDBG funds is important. Uh, I understand that the programmatic portion where certain percentages have to go in certain places, but I would love to see, um, police and fire take advantage of the CDBG program where it's appropriate. It sounds like you're addressing some of that. Um, and that's the public facility construction rehab. It's not limited to public safety. And then obviously economic development, we talked about that earlier this evening. I know there's some parameters there. If we have, uh, 50K of available money, which I think I heard you say towards the end of your presentation, is that correct?
So, so I, so I say this correctly, right now, this is how we're proposing to allocate this year's rounds. There's existing 25,000, um, in the owner occupied that we would like to move to, um, get it off the books. And there's also 55,000 in the, um, in the, um, admin fund that we'd like to get off the books. So old money, we have close to 75, 80,000 dollars that we would like to shift out of there to move over and, and do something with that. City, the ADA sidewalk, um, you know, we have 1,300 curb ramps around town that are out of compliance. And so it's, it's a, um, it's a, it's a win-win for the public works department and the city where we're, um, you know, reducing our liability, fixing these improvements and it's, they're readily constructible. You know, there's not a lot of hiccups or environmental issues with getting the money off the books. Um, so I don't know if that answers your question a little bit?
Well, I, I think I'm gonna...
And so, but any of the money is technically available to shift around.
Okay. And, and again, this is, might sound like I'm, I'm contradicting myself because I'm going to say, hey, look, we need to take care of the city, but I also know we have a bit of a homeless problem. And I also know that, um, um, there is, uh, some work afoot to relocate some homeless areas. And I guess this might be a question to, to both of you, and one of you can give me an answer, is would this money be able to support any of the efforts that the county currently is undertaking in regards to RV parking and, and establishing another place of rest for, for the homeless?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Ben, but I think that if it's COVID-related, it could, you could potentially utilize the COVID CPG funds in terms of providing camping spaces for them to be socially distanced and have, um, space. If it's not COVID-related, then I would defer to Ben as to which funding source out of this you, we would be able to utilize.
So Jaspreet might have to back me up on this one, but we looked into this earlier on because it, it talked about down on Second Street, um, and potential use. I, I think with the low moderate, it had to be for a project that had to be long-term. And so the, the, so the answer was yes with the asterisk that it couldn't be, um, it, it had to be infrastructure. So it had to be, okay, you put the rock down, you're putting something permanent in, it's supposed to be 20 years, I believe. Was it 20-plus years?
And she had mentioned that permanent...
A perm. And, and so, yeah, generally, yes. But we, but, um, we would just have to review it to make sure it kind of qualified under this permanent infrastructure.
Okay.
They, they don't want to see you wipe it in the next year, right before the audit.
Okay. Well, that's for now. That's all I have, thanks.
Through the mayor, I, I, this is, um, I think it was a really well presentation for the complexity of what you have to deal with. Um, I, in these funds, there's a very specific, um, requirement with these, with the feds and it has to be low and moderate and permanent rapid rehousing. And so when you understand that those are the primary uses for these monies, I think as a city, if we are utilizing for infrastructure within the city or any other projects within the city, we have to, um, assure that it's primarily used for low and moderate income persons. You can't generalize it because it, it then it won't, the feds don't tend to allow for these kinds of funds to be utilized, um, in those ways. But I think that your plan, it gives direction and, um, if you change projects, then you're going to have to do that whole thing that you outlined, 30, 45-day, reshift it. The consultant that we have from the homeless consortium, um, is a like to, similar to what our staff, how they take 20% off the top to run the projects, to assure that the projects are in compliance, that we're meeting the requirements by the feds and that no audits and everything's going to go well. That's what this consultant works with the consortium to help assure that all the projects that are being funded through CDBG are meeting all those guidelines. And there is monthly invoices on top of that with attachments of evidence that those expenses are tied to the projects. So if, for example, like Kansas Hope, um, would be, is a coordinated entry location and they're providing services to so many, um, homeless individuals and utilize staff that they're paying under our funding, but paying directly through them, they are having to track all that information, that that staff is utilizing their time, their money, and their efforts to support the homeless community. So I think, um, I'm going a little bit more into detail of the subject because it seems, um, possible in our minds to maybe do some changes, um, as we would like to, but I'd just like to focus on those areas that, that CDBG funding is completely focused on low and moderate incomes persons. And, and the main goal is for permanent housing. That's what they're hoping, that people find homes and are established in those homes. So that's, that's what these funds are, uh, set up for.
I appreciate, um, the explanation, but through my own research, CDBG funds aren't exclusive for low-income housing. You can use them, as they talked about, for improvements that provide services to low-income areas. And that's where the census tracts come into play. You can only do certain projects in those areas that are designated as low-income, but it doesn't have to be exclusively for the benefit of low-income housing and supporting low-income people.
It, correct. I, I, maybe I didn't say it in the same fashion. Prime, I'm reading exactly here, primarily. It's not exclusive, it's not 100%, primarily. It could be, you know, a, a, some sort of, um, you know, low income, moderate could be up in the north area of District One. We could build something out there if we wanted to, that's, that's a usable amount for this monies. But I just wanted to refocus that that's where these funds come from.
I think a classic example and you, and is the ADA sidewalk. Anybody can use that.
Exactly.
There you go.
Right. Right.
Through the mayor. Uh, Ben, first of all, thank you. And, um, I know you're thinking, oh God, here comes the disappointment. It's not with you. Uh, you have done a great job, so let me start saying that from the start. The history behind this and this program, I think is what brings a lot of the animosity that you feel from some of the council. And the fact of the matter is, is we need to have those projects that benefit the most people that it can, that need it within our city. And we talked about ADA. We talk about, uh, I see up there, there's the playground equipment replace. I mean, we've done that throughout the city that has benefited our handicapped community as well. It, it transcends to make Yuba City a better community. I think where it goes back, and this is just my personal opinion, and again, you're doing a great job, Ben. Okay, breathe. But, um, I believe that this has been, uh, used in the past with not the greatest clarity, with not the greatest transparency. And it got to be, for lack of better terms, a little clickish group. I'll give to you and you because I like you, but I'm not going to tell you and invite you to the party because I like you guys better. Um, I think that residual is there. This year is kind of a fix-it, get this stuff off the books, get it moving forward. But I've stated it before and I will continue to state it. Uh, when it comes to RHA, I want to support the projects they bring that benefit multiple people. So I'm glad that they are willing to amend and change from a single apartment to fixing the sewer line, which will keep about seven or eight families in apartments versus just a single. To me, it's about getting more bang for the buck for these grants that come in. And I would like to continue to see this utilized, marketed to where people that are eligible can use this and not the same two or three over and over. Because quite honestly, we've got a homeless population that creates, uh, issues throughout our city that we've got to figure out solutions to. We've got a low-income, uh, housing problem that we've got to find solutions to. When you look at 666,000, we have an awful lot of issues in 666,000. So when I spend a dollar, I want it benefiting the most people possible. Every organization does great work, but if we're going to spend $50,000 or $10,000, I want it reaching as many people as we can. So with this, I thank you for threading that needle. Again, my frustration is not with you. I'm looking forward to the next cycle to where we've reached out to our, um, departments, other organizations to realize this is a program that can be utilized by more than three or four organizations. And, uh, so I just appreciate your work.
Thank you. Sir? You good? All right. Um, I'd like to move, not move, but I would like to, um, no. I'm out of here.
We got a house for you.
Um, I'd like to address item number C, the, uh, ad hoc committee recommended for CDBG CV funding. Um, before we can even make a motion and approve A, B, and C, we have to have a couple names to attach to that. And, um, care to know if anybody might be interested in participating?
Or unhappy team?
I appreciate that. Mr. Cardoza, I think you'd be a great addition to that team. Actually, we don't have a team yet. I'm just, yep, I knew she'd be reaching for the button.
Sorry, I thought Vice Mayor was going to go in there for the dive, I thought...
No, I'm volunteering you.
Oh.
There you go.
I was like, finally, I thought Vice Mayor and I were going to go together to play in the same sandbox.
Well, you're doing that right now.
I love that with, um, Cardoza.
Appreciate it. You guys do a good job and thank you very much for that.
All right.
Okay, so we do have item C, it'd be part of the motion for Councilmember Espendola and Councilmember Cardoza to be a part of that when we get to that point. If there's no further discussion, do we have any, let me see, we need to do a public hearing, refresh my memory. We ought to do that?
It is.
Did it already do it? Not yet. All right, so we're going to open the public hearing on the item? Do we have anything?
No, you did not.
You do not? I don't see anything here, so we will close that. And, um, unless there's any further discussion, we're at motion time.
Through the mayor?
Sir?
Like the staff's recommendation of the community development block grant, 2020, 2024 consolidated plan, 2020, 21 annual action plan, analyst and intimate affair housing choice, uh, recommendations A, B, and C. Oh, and, uh, appointing, uh, Councilwoman Espendola and myself on the ad hoc committee.
Thank you and thank you. We have a second.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before we have a second, we don't need to approve agenda item, or A, because that was conducted a public hearing, we already did that, so we just...
There you go.
We need to move, approve B and C.
All right, so, so that's fine. Anybody second that? B and C?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Nothing, thank you. That's a, you know, we're 10 of financial guy talking right there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Comments, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. You survived.
Yep.
All right, so now we're at number 21, appointment of another ad hoc committee for the recruitment of a permanent city manager and other actions for permanent city manager recruitment. Um, we do have this recruitment coming up. It's going to be a very long process. We have a lot of work to do. I think we've learned some lessons recently that, uh, we want to address and make sure that we, um, come together as a council and, um, address those... to address and make sure that we come together as a council and address those things and ask the questions that we wish we would have before. And so for that case, you know, it's, we want to do a good job. And I think an ad hoc committee would be a good way to go because it's kind of streamlined processes. We don't have to notice meetings. We don't have to do a lot of things like that procedure wise that will save us some time. But yeah, the ad hoc committee, as always, comes back to the full council and we go over the details and the things that the committee would put together and then make a decision as a group. And that's not to say, you know, things weren't done before. It's just that we have learned some, some lessons and we have some things we can, we can, I think, improve on. We always do. The learning process always continues. And that goes back, you know, decades. You can always do that. So we'll open up for any discussion anybody might have.
Through you, the mayor. I think it's a great idea that we have an ad hoc committee to help us and help our team. I think two gentlemen, Hiley of, and besides yourself and Cardoza, there's only two other left, Vice Mayor Boom Garden and Councilman Shaw to represent us on the ad hoc. And I'm sure I have confidence in both of you leading our team within the city to bring some recommendations back to us.
Okay, we can go back to them and see what they think about that idea.
I'm good.
You're good with it?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate your anticipated hard work and professionalism on that. No doubt that we're going to get 100% from that. Looking forward to some recommendations and some information. The, you know, we've learned, like I said, the many things we've learned is that we have so much latitude on the process. It's almost a blank slate. And so it's, it's going to be exciting and sure very thorough. So, thank you very much. So the action is to appoint two council members to serve the ad hoc committee for the recruitment of our new city manager. The purpose of the committee would be to make a recommendation to the city manager as to a consultant coordinator for the recruitment, recruiting process, to review recruitment material, assist with the preliminary screening of initial applicants, and to take on any additional rule duties as may be designated by the city council. So that would be the charge, gentlemen. All right. And we have a motion. I think you just made a motion, didn't you?
I moved to.
Uh-oh.
Is there any public comment on this item before you take a vote?
Well, I wouldn't know that because I didn't ask. So give me a second, real quick. Let me find out. I'll go over here.
No, there is no public comment.
All right. Shannon, there, that's no on that. All right. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Any future agenda items? All right. I'll ask one more time, Madam City Clerk, is there any comment from the public pending that we'd like to?
No, no more.
All right. So we're on to reports and communications, city council reports, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
All righty. I'd like to start off this council meeting with meetings. I attended the Feather River Air Quality District Meeting, our Regional Housing Authority, our Homeless Ad hoc Committee Meeting, and we will be having another one this Saturday, working with the supervisors, hopefully trying to find a location for RV parking and a campsite. Tended, I was in with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, and then I listened in on Gilseizer Drainage District, getting a little update. I haven't listened much. I like to get updates and see how everything's going there. For community and city events, I helped pass out masks with the free mask giveaway hosted by Sutter County Sheriff's Department. I'd like to thank Sheriff Barnes for the invite, and that was also with our Yuba City Police Department there. And then also our Chamber and our Economic Development Corporation, we helped pass out masks and sanitizers to our small businesses in the community. So they passed out eight bottles, a sanitizer guaranteed, and then masks depended on the size of your business, ranging up to 50 employees. I attended the Yuba City DBAs at the Pluma Street Shopping District, Saturday Summer Marketplace. They closed the city on a Saturday. They did what they want, what they introduced to us a couple of months ago. It was a real nice turnout. The businesses did put their stuff out on the sidewalk. It was a very nice day and a good time there. And also, we did this last week, we attended the Twin Cities Memorial Bridge Completion Ceremony by our mayor here in council. That was a great day in our community. The bridge is 99% complete, got a little bit of finishing up, but it's a wonderful thing in our community. And I'm happy that I'm here to say that we were here with the start and the finish of it. And then this morning, our early risers quanas, we made 250 meals, tri-tip dinners for the Beal Military Liaison Council for 250 families. And then I'd like to do a special thank out. Thank you to all our city employees for dealing with this COVID issue, stepping up, helping us. I know it's tough times, but I appreciate all the hard work you do, all the employees, public works, city hall, also Fire and PD, of course. I want to thank you all for that. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, Councilman Cardoza. You reminded me of a meeting that I was present with you. And that was on the homeless ad hoc. And we're going to serve on another one together. So our follow-up meeting on that is on the 24th, which is Monday. And hopefully we'll have further information of the plans of how Sutter County is asking for us to partner up with this, with the county. And hopefully they'll present to us a plan with a number. So that was some of the questions we were asking today is how much should we set aside? Well, we really don't know because we don't have that number and we don't have a plan yet. We're going to work on that, though. The other Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, the standard meeting went reviewed over the projects. They may postpone the following one, participated on the North Sacramento Valley Management, called in. There was not a quorum, so we need to regroup and hopefully, because there's some agenda items that need to be passed on that. So letting you know, Diana, for the, for the North SAC Valley one. Yuba Sutter EDC, the board, we had a meeting and Brenda highlighted the different programs that, the loan programs that are being offered right now. They just finished distributing the Sutter County, I don't know, $630,000. And they were in the process of bringing in, I don't know, over a million and something from Yuba County. So EDC's been working with a lot of community members in the area of grants. These funds are available. The Sutter County ones are, the deadline has already passed. I think the Yuba County one, she's working on to set a date for those funds to be expended. Those are grants and monies that are not going to need to be repaid by small businesses. And they're also working on the census. Her team is working on getting people to do the census. If you haven't done your census, please do it. We talked about this, what is it, the SEDS? Yes, the SEDS document, which was by the board, considered a pretty big document that was important for the infrastructure and future funding. One of the board members, George Carpenter, I'm sure some of you may know the name, reported that Lakeside Project for Sutter Point is on track. So things are moving and that Sutter County and our area is needing a tremendous amount of housing. And this is an opportunity for us to hopefully provide some of that through EDC. I want to thank Brad McIntyre because Brad does a tremendous amount of work that just kind of under the radar. And he always does it with such a ease and, and willingness and just seems always in a good mood. And he brings me always a good mood light. And so he and I were talking about, hey, how, how are youth commissioners doing? How are park rec commissioners doing? How are our senior commissioners? Because we have other commissioners besides the economic commissioners and, you know, talking to Diana. So he's been busy with his team figuring out how to get these commissioners engaged and involved in meetings. So thank you, Brad, for making sure that our commissioners are getting back involved and engaged. There's one particular project that we're working on that, that I'm, you know, hoping that we have some good success. As I mentioned before in a previous meeting, I am on the Latino Outreach for Education with the COVID Team for the Bye County Region. And one of the areas that Diana, our city manager, noted that the positive rates are with younger populations. And one of the issue, challenges within the committee is to come up with some sort of really innovative, cool kind of public announcements or, or engaging young people. So we're going to, we're going to set up with our youth commissioners, with Kelsey, to set up a meeting with Dr. Lou, myself, and the PR team for Yuba and Sutter County to help develop some sort of messaging or some sort of project to get them involved in helping educate and outreach to help with this COVID-19. So I think that's going to be a good project for our youth commissioners to be involved in. Unfortunately, the numbers are increasing. And I, I just plead with folks that, that you hopefully take this seriously. I would love to be off the watch list. If we can all just have the priority, get off the watch list, then we can move on to hopefully normalizing more of our business. But we can't do it alone. I can't do it alone. I, I've been staying home a lot alone. And it's like the movie Home Alone. You know what happens? Things just start going sideways because you're home a lot. I also want to say to our fire department that I am really impressed with our fire chief. He has been working with our fire team, in particular Vice Mayor Boom Garden just mentioned earlier, all these fires that we are surrounded of at this moment. And I want to thank you and your team for constantly communicating with us, letting us know how and where our team is out assisting other community members, but assuring that our community is safe and we have the right staffing available. So thanks, chief. I really appreciate your hard work on that. And if, if anything, please just be prepared if there's any situation with a fire hazard. I'm going to gas up the car and have a few bottles of water in some emergency, something in the, in the trunk, just in case. My last final comment is that I came dressed in white, not for any other spiritual issue or anything, but I came dressed in white today to celebrate the 100 years of the suffrage of women's right to vote. Today is the approval of the 19th Amendment and, and showing the video that we acknowledged local women leaders. And I would love for our city council to continue that, become a tradition for us to recognize, expand the, the scope of women that we recognize. Each of us have women in our life that I think that you would want to bring forward and recognize as well. And I am proud to, to serve with you, gentlemen, because I am often, get this, believe it or not, often asked, how is it to work with all male council? How is that, Grace? That's like one of the top number five questions I get asked. And depending on the day, I'll be honest, you all know me up here, gentlemen. I'm like, for the most part, they're really good men and they listen and they give me the opportunity, show up. There's days when we kind of rumble and then we come back and say, you know what? I respect you. You respect me. Let's just move forward and do what's best for this community. But I have to say, ladies and gentlemen, whoever's watching out there, I appreciate you, gentlemen, for really allowing me to share this space with you. And for all the women before me, I thank them. And for the ones thereafter me. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Grace. Well said.
Sir?
All right, Mr. Mayor. And Grace, thank you. Thanks for being part of us. Mine, the last few weeks has all been about finance and budget. I'm going to keep it real short. Thanks, Spencer and Lynn. You guys, we've, Vice Mayor and myself have just really dug down deep, not looking for anything, but trying to get a better understanding so that we can come back together and report to the council. And I, I'm looking forward to the workshop. We've talked about that in those ad hoc meetings to where you can bring forth to bring even better clarity and such to, to our city finances. And there will be a few surprises along the way as, has shown up because of COVID and stuff. And same time, I'm still cautiously optimistic of how things will come out in September, October, as we await the final numbers from the first half of the year for sales tax reporting and such because that'll have a huge impact as well. Sticking along those lines, I did attend a meeting with Supervisor Conant. He's been holding a few series to keep the Sutter County community apprised. And I was there talking about more finances. I was there with the, with Nate Black as well, and talking about our economy, talking about property taxes, sales tax, the obstacles we face. And the bottom line is, you know, how do we support our farmers and our businesses through this time and come out of this together, out of COVID? And so it was, it was a good time it was had there. I do want to bring up one more of our city employees, who I think is a very integral part of our team. And I, it's not an agenda item, but I would honestly like to have the council consider this if we can find even a little bit of money in our budget ad hoc. But that is George. George does all of our video productions in the background. He recorded over at the bridge dedication. He's done all these things. Wonderful guy behind the camera, puts these together. But we've asked him to give us a top quality product and we're giving him, you know, Mattel equipment, so to speak. And I would like for us to, if we can, try to find some real equipment to where we can put out some good messages to the community, to put our best foot forward because George is doing an incredible job with what he's got. And I would just ask that as we move forward, we start looking at if we can find a few thousand dollars to buy at least some good microphones and such. We've got great equipment here, but when we go out, it's been very difficult. As many of us has recorded a few things several times because the audio wasn't correct. So that's just an ask. And George, if you do review this and listen, you do an incredible, awesome job. So thank you. Lastly, I have Transit coming up on Thursday. So we'll be reporting out of that, the latest and greatest as far as how they're adapting to COVID. As you guys know, they've also, you know, a lot of the different bus routes have been running on modified schedules. Certain bus routes were canceled, like the one to the Yuba College Sutter County campus because they're, of course, they're not in person. That happened quite a while ago. And Regional Waste Management Authority was canceled for this month, but there'll be ongoing things there. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you, Councilwoman Espandola, for your kind comments. I appreciate that. And right back at you. Well, all of us are, bring our own unique and good perspective to the, you don't want everyone thinking alike. You know, better decisions come from diversity and, and we all do that. So happy birthday to Councilman Shaw. I don't think anybody has, has said that yet. You know, he's.
He almost made it.
He doesn't like being acknowledged for that, but it is his birthday today. So I want, I don't want to, well, maybe I do want to jab you a little bit on that one, but there we go. It's been mentioned already, but Lynn, Lynn Hale and Spencer Morrison, Diana Langley, a lot of work in regards to the ad hoc committee on the budget. Really looking forward to wrapping some of that stuff up and then getting together with all of us again for a budget workshop. A lot of things were looked at and a lot of things are going to need some of your expertise too, as we try to move forward and, and present, you know, a budget going forward. Of course, a lot of that depends on the revenues. I attended a Gilseizer Drainage District Meeting as Councilwoman Espandola's alternate, and we approved their budget. I want to thank the mayor. He shanghaied me into attending a SECOG meeting for him this coming Thursday. And I think it's probably the most controversial item they've ever had on their agenda.
It wasn't planned.
Yeah, okay. Actually, it has to do with how they disperse money to, to the member organization. So I, I think I'm getting emails almost every half hour right now, being lobbied. Thanks.
Welcome.
But we'll do what's right for Yuba City. I want to. I want to extend a gracious thank you for the city allowing our council to have Gail Barkhouse participate in the bridge dedication, it was very meaningful to her. For those of you who don't know the story, her husband, Bob Barkhouse, was one of the instigators, if you will, getting that project going with the funding, and it really did mean a lot for her to be there with us, and thank you for allowing that to happen under the COVID situations. I do want to acknowledge the employees of the city, I do know this is a long, we used to have these things in the fire service, Chief Alexander will know this, called a duration drill, and it was how long can you last? And, you know, you can just see, you know, the wear and tear on all of us in the community, not just our employees, but I mean, they come to work each day delivering the kind of service that I think we as a city have come to expect. But there, you know, it's a tough time, you know, those who have people in school, you know, trying to manage that, trying to come to work, and just, when is this all going to end? I do agree with the comments in regards to, hey, we need to be careful of our own, our own health and those of those around us. But as the statistics show, and I'll jump out here on a little bit on a ledge, you don't see that the causation of this stuff has to do with businesses, and I really do believe that we need to really strongly consider opening up our businesses. I know that we're not the main decision-maker in that, but I know that we swing away behind the scenes trying to make that happen, and I think it's vitally important. I won't get into the school thing, that's a school district thing, we don't have any control over that, but obviously getting children back in school, I think, when it's safe to do so, is important. Shout out to the firefighters, I think we have eight, almost nine now, maybe, kind of, sort of, that are out there providing mutual aid. We've done that, we have a long history of doing that here in Yuba City. It is a toll on them, these aren't easy tasks that they get assigned to do, so I pray for their safety out there as they're out there battling fires, which, while I was, had to recuse myself, was kind of catching up on, there's a lot of activity going on out there, a lot. I do want to mention two more things, one is the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. You know, this is, again, this is a big issue for the city, and I'm very, very pleased with the works of our consultant and our staff, Diana and Ben. I continue to be, I want to choose my word here, discouraged, not by the Sutter County supervisors and their staff, but by the consultant they've hired. I don't have a problem saying that publicly, it just seems like that drags on and on, and we really do need to get that done. And my understanding is, is that we may be getting a proposal from them either later this week or the first part of next week, so that needs to happen. Final thing is, a shout out to the, I want to make sure I get this right, it's the Matthew Axelson Division U.S. Naval Sea Cadets. You may know that this group of young people, males and females, that are part of this Sea Cadets, that are housed at our armory down on B Street, they traveled all the way to Nevada here a weekend ago or so to support the Matthew Axelson Foundation, which, if you know the story of Lone Survivor, you know that Matthew Axelson, who was married to a local person here, was unfortunately killed in action. But this foundation is one that takes care of the SEALs, Special Operations Warriors Foundation, which pays for the scholarships for any SEALs' children that need schooling after the unfortunate passing of that SEAL. But these young men and women from Yuba City drove the three hours up to this place in Nevada where they had this fundraiser, and I hope to have them here in a meeting when COVID allows, because I think it would be great to not only acknowledge the fact that, you know, they're out in the community doing things, but that they're, you know, part of the Naval Sea Cadets, and I think it's a good thing. Anyway, with that, thank you to the council, every day and every way. It's been a challenge, but it's a good one, and Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, thanks.
All right, thank you. I'll start with echoing the sentiment for the Sea Cadets, they're a wonderful organization. I know there's a few community events where they'll do the colors, and they always do a great job. They can start out, I believe, as young as eight years old, and they work their way on up. Hopefully, I guess the intent is get them in the Navy, but it's a great organization, so thank you for that. Also, you know, it's important that we recognize the city staff and everything that they do every day. I can imagine what it must be like to not know what's going on and dealing with the uncertainty from multiple angles all the time. And then we, you know, duty still calls, and we still try to run the city, and then it's what's next, and what's next? And that's kind of wear on folks and be stressful. So I acknowledge everybody in this room for the work that you do for our city, and we all will work together to get through it together. Just, we're all looking forward to getting on the other side of this. But some hard work, and it takes a lot of stamina to endure it, particularly when we don't really have a defined end in sight. I think Grace mentioned that we all just have to do our part to acknowledge that it's real, and we're not going to get through to the other side until we all do our part, so. Thank you for all of that. As far as things have gone on recently, I am on the League of California's Cities, excuse me, Community Services Policy Committee, and they, we had a brief meeting, of course, via Zoom, advocating, I was happy to see, advocating for federal dollars to be paid directly to cities when bypass some of the bureaucracy that usually lays between us and the federal government. I was asked to be, and I will do so, be in an advisory role for a nonprofit regarding homelessness, inclusion, and community solidarity, as spearheaded by Pastor Richard and a lady named Gwen Ford affiliated with the Bethel AME Church in Marysville. Gone to a meeting with them before, and some really good people, and it's my honor to be a part of that, to the extent I'm able. Let's see here. I also attended Gilseizer, it was in fact a short meeting, it primarily consisted of approving the budget. I want to also give a shout out to the parents out there for school, we talk about trying to get that sucker, those suckers open as soon as we can, and I guarantee that the school district is trying to do so, but they have to do so, again, when it's, when it's safe. I just hope that when it's safe comes sooner than later. I have a new appreciation for single parents with having a 10-year-old at home in school. It's, I don't know if I can do it, so we'll find out, every day's a new challenge. For me, I fight with this thing all day long, just doing the work is fine, but the technology is a problem, on my end, not the school's end. Yuba Sutter Arts, I just want to give a shout out to them, David Reeve and Abby Sessina, the work that they do. They are still so present out in the community despite COVID. They've found ways around almost everything, and they're doing a great job. The next thing they have is called mannequins, emphasis on woman, wool mannequins. I wrote, I wrote down the wrong thing, wool mannequins, and that is, they're having a display, I guess they're decorating the wool mannequins, and putting them on display in the front yard of the Tea Garden House on the 22nd of this month. Also, it's my honor to assign a letter supporting a major grant that they're putting forth to do, I think statues, like a trail or something through the parks, so if you have, like, for example, a Peter Rabbit thing, it starts out, and as you go through the trail, it kind of progresses through the story, and this tells a story through statuary, I believe. See, Subufka, again, pretty roots. All right, I wish I could think of something to say to that, I just can't right now. Yeah. Where are you? Shannon texting you? He's texting somebody. Of course, participating weekly, weekly calls with Chamber and SACOG. I'm on the Equity Subcommittee, and trying to figure out ways that we can ensure that our underserved communities are included in SACOG policies. And they put forth a great definition, you see the difference between equity and equal, equality, equality and equity, and I really appreciated that perspective. So we're just going to look into, take a deep dive into policies and make sure that we are giving everybody their fair share. I'm also on the Transportation Subcommittee, and that's when we approved, there's many subcommittees, but we approved by majority vote of the, one of the ways for the funding round that the full board will be voting on on Thursday, and I thank you for stepping in for me on that, I will be out of town for four days. It's, yeah, it's a lot of reading, a lot of reading. Let's see, again, EDC meeting with Brenda, Diana, and Grace, I think it went very well in the end, and we're looking forward to some positivity and some results coming out of that, I guarantee you, I'm confident that it will happen. It was my pleasure to participate in the Fifth Street Bridge opening, very historic occasion. We talked about it early on, do we want to wait until COVID is over or do something now? And I'm really glad that we made the decision to get George out there, and Craig Starkey, and a few other people to commemorate the day of, even though it was a COVID commemoration by video, but it's still memorialized in perpetuity. And then when we do, are able to come together as a community, it's going to be one heck of a celebration, so. That was very nice, and thank you all for attending that. And lastly, I was asked, and I was really glad I did, a podcast, a local guy named Randy Warner, I don't know if any of you know him or not, great guy, he did the comedy night once a month at Cellar and Suds, he used to do that. He's just a, kind of a good personality, and he has a Yuba and Sutter podcast, he calls it the Yass Cast. And basically, you just go in his house and sit down with a microphone, and you, and you, and you talk for one, two, three hours. And it's about anything and everything, and there's a few, yeah, it's really cool. So all of you, I gave him all your numbers, so you'll be, you'll be ratcheted.
Yeah.
But he's a, he's a really good guy.
I'm just kidding, I know Randy, he's an awesome guy, I've been, I think it would be really cool, I'm going to have to go listen to your pod.
We talked about everything, and so, but he has, he's a very casual guy, it's kind of like, not the other ones locally are, but like 93Q, you just sit there and you talk and you be yourself, they're not out to get anybody or anything, you just want to talk. And that's the way Randy is, and I really appreciated that, and it was a good time, so. Thank you, Randy, and I hope Yass Cast succeeds, and I'm sure it will. That being said, the six of us here are going to go ahead and call the meet, what? Well, there's six if you count the gnome.
I like Elvis.
It's late, we can joke, right?
Okay, I forgot.
Thank you all for coming.